So. Not here. Alright.
Okay, that's roll call. Thank you very much, Fay. Um, do we have any, any public comments for anything not on the agendas for tonight? He went on Zoom or in the audience?
Yes, we do, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay.
So we have, uh, Mr. Jim Tolt.
Okay, is, he's coming up to the.
So Jim.
Yeah, go and come up to the mic there and state your name for the record.
Excuse me? We need to stop, uh, we need to approve our consent calendar?
Um. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, that comes after the, uh, public comment or on items not on the agenda.
Never mind.
Thank you. Mister Tolt.
All right, thank you. My name is Jim Tolt, Newburgh resident. I'm speaking later tonight on an agenda item, but I asked for this moment in time because I wanted to apologize for you folks on the commission for all those emails I bombard you with. It was, I was not email grandstanding. I honestly, I just didn't know what the process was. And I started out by looking online and I couldn't find the CAC committee or contact point. So then I sent something to Mary. Then I realized that Mary is, excuse me, Mary is no longer involved in the process. So then I went back to the, uh, Planning Commission and I found the list of everybody, but it didn't tell me who was the chair. And I just went, oh, fine, I just sent it to all of them. So that's what happened. And, uh, then when I submitted my speaking request, again, there was some confusion, but anyway, the upshot is, uh, Sue and Fay got me straightened out. Learning has taken place. That won't happen again. Thank you. But it did bring up a couple of questions I had and I, I'm not sure if, if you folks allow a question or give a response, but I'll just see what happens. I was, is the CAC and the Planning Commission one in the same? I saw some heads nod.
Planning Commissioner, right? Yes, um, for, from June twenty twenty-two to current or December, December or January, yeah. Uh, we were in that position rather than forming a whole new group.
Okay, alright. So is it possible for someone who's not on the commission like me to, to join the CAC present or future?
I'll answer that. Thank you. Um, so for purposes of what occurred through the multi-family code audit, the direction from the city manager, the former city manager was to utilize the planning commission as the CAC for that project. And so we did. Uh, in the past, when we formed other citizen advisory committees, the, it goes to the mayor and then goes to the council. And the council is the one that affirms who's going to be on a, an ad hoc citizen advisory committee. So there's opportunities in the future. Right now, the CAC for the multi-family is terminated. Uh, their role and tasks have been completed. It's now on to the planning commission as a formal review and then go to the city council.
No, okay, I'm too late to the game, right? But I did enjoy the process and I, and, um, I enjoyed reading through all those longness code and stuff. So yeah, I'll keep my eyes peeled for future CAC type opportunities. And, uh, that's all I got until the agenda item. Thank you very much for, uh, listening to me.
Uh, thank you, Mister Tolt.
So we have anyone? Yes, we have one other individual under public comments, Mister Ed Parish.
And he's in person?
Yes, he is.
Very well, Mister Parish, please approach the mic. Thank you. And state your name to the mic there and what do you got in mind?
Uh, my name's, excuse me. My name's Ed Parish. I am a resident sixteen hundred waterfront street in Newburgh. Um, my question here tonight is, is how is this, uh, board planning? I, I don't, I'm not a good public speaker, so excuse me. But how is this going to affect my property at sixteen hundred waterfront? Um, we've recently been annexed into the city. And I'm trying to, I need to remodel and, um, and update the septic system, which I cannot get to now. Cause plans have been changed. You're not bringing the sewer to the front of my property now. As was agreed with my mother who owns the property when she allowed the annexation in. So I'm just curious how all this is working uh, for my property. So, um, I have plans in the, for in the future. Yeah, I've been there since nineteen sixty-seven. And, uh, I wanna live and die there. So I need, I need to update that sewer system is going to fail.
Sure, sure. Uh, Doug, is, is this, do you have the information on this? Cause is this a, uh, you've been annexed from the county into the city? Is that correct?
I will turn this over to our planning manager, Mister Downing, who's been having conversations with Mister Parish.
Very well, thank you, Doug.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so Doug and myself and Mister Parish and Janet, who was last name, I'm forgetting. We had a meeting in February where we discussed this topic. Um, recent correspondence was shared with Mister Parish, where we indicated that he is able to repair the septic, but there can't be an expansion to it. And it can't be in conjunction with a, a new project or a new development. Um, the property is located more than one hundred feet from an existing sewer line at this point. Sewer extension is planned for some time in the future. It's in the five-year capital improvement project list. But it's not known if that's going to be in year one, two, three, four, or five. So that's something that we just don't have an answer to. So until that sewer extension occurs, he has the ability to do a repair. But since it's been annexed into the property, a sewer connection is required when that sewer connection becomes available. And there are limitations on what can be done on that property in the interim as well. So that's one of the things that Mister Parish is, is asking about what he can do. And, uh, we're continuing to look into a pathway if he would like to consider um, what we were in our meeting calling de-annexation, but the state would refer to as a withdrawal from the district and that district being the city. So if they want to essentially not, no longer be, um, be part of the city, that would be a withdrawal process. So that's something that myself and Director Rux are both looking into, but we don't have. We don't, just don't know. It's unusual enough that that hasn't occurred here in a and a time that anyone recalls. So we don't have a way to do that yet. So the only olive branch at work that is available is that Mister Parish can fix the, fix or repair the system, but he can't expand it and can't replace it. And that's through conversations with the Public Works Department because that starts getting into connections to public infrastructure.
Okay, so my question to Mister Parish would be is can you get by with a temporary repair in light of a, um, five-year window? To?
I do not believe that, um, uh, that's going to ha- work for me. The house is well over a hundred years old. There's varmints living in the walls, ants and bugs and, and all kinds of creatures that have been in that house longer than my family's been in this town. And I'm going to have to remodel. And, um, again, I, the, I don't know that if I just, I don't know when they put that septic system in nineteen forty-something. I don't know. Long before permits were required. So I don't even know if, if what's there is appropriate for what I'm living in currently. So I need, well, I'm definitely interested in de-annexing and going back to the county who, who's already said they'll issue me the permit. I've been over with them. So, and then I need to, I need to build a house and I need to, I'm sixty-eight years old. I'll be sixty-nine years old. I need a bedroom on the bottom floor. So when I get too old to climb the stairs, I got a place to sleep. So I plan on living to be right. So I'll be around here for a while.
Don't we all? Okay, uh, any commissioners have any questions for, uh, Mister Parish here?
Yes, this is, sorry, this is, uh, Commissioner.
Please.
I'm just wondering, um, if there are any downsides that, um, Mister Parish may not know about.
If he's taking the mic thing?
Oh, I apologize. I'm wondering if there are any downsides, sides? If, um, Mister Parish decides to withdraw from the city that he may not be aware of at this point?
Um, this evening I could not answer that. Commissioner, again, Clay has been working on this and talking with Mister Parish. We're going through the statutes on this loosely de-annexation. Um, I've never done one before, so we're trying to figure that all out. The, if it was to occur, it would take the property out of the corporate limits of the city. Uh, then there would also need to be a corresponding uh, adjustment to the urban renewal district boundary as well to take it out of that program.
I'm just wondering if there's any, um, downsides to Mister Parish withdrawing from the city and, and I'm just advising that you might want to take that into consideration before you go ahead and make the decision, whichever way you decide to go. Just make sure that you have all the information that you can possibly get the pros and the cons.
Thank you. I'm, I'm certainly, um, uh, willing to look into all of the pros and the cons. Um, at this point, I think there's a lot more pros. I didn't want it. Mother had this done thinking there would be sewer at the front of the property. And there's not going to be in, and I don't, again, I stayed at my age. I have to have a septic system. I don't want it failing and running down into the river. And I need a new house. That house has to be remodeled. I live in it personally. I know. Enough said.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Uh, I do.
Please.
Did I hear correctly that Mister Parish is able to fix or repair the current septic system, but not replace it?
That is my understanding from conversations with, um, with the Public Works Agency.
What, what would he, what options are available to him if uh, an inspection reveals it's beyond economical repair?
That would, given that it's, it's really under code and mu- municipal code sections associated with the Public Works Department. And so I don't really have any precedence that I can look towards on what happens when there is a complete failure, if it could be replaced, but only sized to a certain this or that. So if we wanted to do an additional conversation, I think community development, we'd be happy to be there. But it would really need to have someone from Public Works that can speak to that ideally that's got some kind of, uh, precedence and knows what the city has done in the past.
Commissioner, right, Doug?
Please.
Are are there any, uh, programs that he can access, um, for financial means to help with the repair?
Not that I'm aware of, Count, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So I just had a random thought. This may not work or something, uh, but, uh, so it's, it seems to me the dilemma that Mister Parish is having here is is, uh, basically analogous to a sunk cost. He doesn't want to sink a bunch of costs into repair. He's gonna have to eventually completely redo after when he, when it comes time to redo the house. So what about the possibility of constructing an ADU, uh, onto the property somewhere? And having a, a temporary sewer system into that so he has someplace to live in the meantime, the five-year window for the overall sewer hookup happens.
I don't know what an ADU is, but I have, if I understand what you guys are saying, I have talked with the county, the people at the county where they issue the permits and it is my understanding that a, a complete rebuild in a different place on the property is legal. And they, they assured me they would likely issue me the permit. Where it is currently is out on the south side of the house and there's a lot of trees. And I know that that, uh, cottonwood is about six feet in diameter has got its roots in my septic system. I know that.
So, so an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. It's basically like a, be like an add-on to the existing. So you'd have that to, to live in. And then you could do whatever with the, uh, the uh, the house to remodel it or, or, you know, whatever you're gonna do. Just, just an idea.
Thank you. Yeah, Janet, we're in the, in the negotiations with my parents to buy this out of the trust. There are seven of us children in this, in this trust. And we are in negotiations with my parents to buy this home out of the trust. We have the money to completely build a house. All we need is people to get out of our way and let us do it.
That's always the trick, isn't it?
Yep, that's all we need.
Okay.
I think that does me. Thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you.
Could I add one more thought?
Commissioner Creed, please.
I know that I had a hope one time in Lake Grove area of like how sweet go. And I was up against kind of the same thing because I had to redo my, I had rebuilt my house. I had to redo the septic system and it was very old. And it didn't work. Um, I had an option because it was an old flood plain to do a sand filter system. But what I found out was that I could run an extension to the existing sewer line that crossed over carbon drive and over across the, um, to where they were building houses. So I just thought maybe I would put that out there that that might be um, an option that you could do an extension to the sewer system that is going in.
If I understand you correctly, you're saying something about extending to what the sewer that is being built? Is that, is that what, okay, that is about three hundred feet or more away from me. It's behind the Weatherly Place where they stopped it. They, instead of bringing the sewer, as I understood they were supposed to, or they were, they had planned, instead of bringing it in front of my property, they bored underneath of the bypass and they're taking that new subdivision phase three of the Willcutts properties and they're taking it out north and underneath the bypass, the sewage, underneath the bypass and tying into, to, um, College Street. I have talked with many people and I've worked in the dirt my own self. So I'm capable of doing this work, but I've talked with many people and they, they're giving me estimates of about three hundred thousand dollars to just lay a line to tie in the sewer system on North College. And that's after I get all the permission to go underneath of the state of Oregon's bypass property and everything else, which would stand in the way. So there's just no chance of it. The best solution is just let me build a, a septic system. I can do it.
Right. Good luck.
I will build it to code. I'll follow the directions.
Yeah, they may let you build a sand filter system. I'm sorry, I keep, um, talking, but I don't blame you. It was not any, it was much less for me to run that extension and it was a couple hundred feet than it was to put in a sand filter system. So anyway, good luck to you. I, um, well.
Yeah, the three hundred thousand dollars I don't have, but worse the, worse yet is that I would have to get under state or federal property, the bypass property to tie in. I, I would, I would have so many hurdles. The very best solution is just build a new septic system. And I'll.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Parish.
So Mister Vice Chair, that was all of the public comments we had.
Very well, thank you. At this time, I'd like to, uh, move on to the consent calendar for the February meeting. Do I have a motion about those minutes?
Uh, Commissioner Wright, motion to approve planning commission minutes for uh, two nine twenty twenty-three?
Well, I have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second that.
Well, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a voice vote for that? Everyone say aye? Who approves? Anyone, anyone disapprove, say nay? Okay, I, I'll add my eye to that as well. So that's a, uh, uh, approval of the uh, minutes for the February meeting. And we're moving on to a quasi judicial public hearing, hearings. And for this, we will, uh, have five minutes of testimony uh, for everyone except the applicants and the chief opponents, which will have fifteen minutes maximum. And we have a, uh, hearing on uh, one hundred South Garfield Street subdivision, which is S U B three two two dash zero zero one. And we'll go on to the staff report.
Mister Vice Chair, before we get there, we have a couple procedural things we need to deal with. First is calling for extensions, bias, export, contact and objections to jurisdiction.
Excuse me, I don't have the cheat sheet, cheat sheet in front of me. That's okay. Uh,
I'll try to be your right hand tonight.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, so do we have any extensions, uh, to jurisdiction or, uh, uh, exporte contacts? Please speak up.
I have a, uh, this is Garfield. I believe I have potential bias. He, I have, I do live within the confines of the five hundred feet and I've been notified by the city based on my home location, but I will not let that affect my position.
Okay, you feel you are able to maintain a, uh, neutral disposition on this for a while. Uh, anyone else?
Planning Commissioner Wright, I also too live in close proximity. I've been sent a letter, but I will not let it impair my decision for this evening.
Very well, thank you. Everyone, uh, be sure to speak up on things like this. So, so we can't be accused of any kind of bias. Thank you. Okay, and I believe we also have a, um, a LUBA, uh, disclaimer to read.
We do have the legal announcement that Commissioner Hanson needs to read.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, O R S one ninety-seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that I must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable, applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria, which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in a, in an appeal of this case to the land use board appeals, L U B A, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of, of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its destiny to respond to the issue per, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidenti- evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant might, might request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Okay, I believe that's the, all the, uh, the caveats and disclaimers before this. So we can move on to this staff report. Doug?
I will turn this over to Ashley Smith.
Miss Smith, thank you.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ashley Smith and, um, I'll wait for Fay to get the PowerPoint up here, but I will be presenting the subdivision, um, preliminary plat, uh, report tonight for you. Um, at this time, I would like to enter the entire staff report into the record. Oh, I think we're, we're waiting on the clicker now. No, there, there we go. Hey, okay, okay. Okay, sorry about that. So, um, a little bit of background information regarding, um, the case tonight. Uh, it is to subdivide a one point nine three acre property into eight lots for residential homes. The location is one hundred South Garfield Street. Tax law is identified as R three two one nine D B zero four six nine zero. The applicant and the owner are Scott Holden. The property is zoned R two, which is our medium density zone. Also on the property is the stream corridor overlay sub-district. The review criteria that I will be going over tonight are, um, uh, Newburgh Municipal Code fifteen two three fives, excuse me, one five point two three five point zero five zero, which is the land division criteria and fifteen point three four two, which is the stream corridor criteria and fifteen point two one zero, which is the code adjustment criteria. Here is a aerial view of the lots highlighted in blue. Um, you can also see the stream corridor overlay, um, in the northwest, uh, quarter, um, corner of the property. Site information, um, the topography of the site is predominantly flat with an incline to the northwest that then slopes down to an unnamed tributary to Shahealem Creek. The existing land use is a duplex that will remain on an individual lot. The natural features include stream corridor with riparian vegetation and an unnamed tributary to Shahealem Creek. Surrounding land use, uh, we have residential low density, uh, to the north, to the east, we have medium density and high density. Then to the south, we have medium density and to the west, we have low density and medium density. Sorry, that's not showing up very clear for us here. For our zoning, um, to the north, we have R one, to the east, R two and R three, and to the south, we have R two, and to the west, R one. So existing accessing utilities access is currently provided from East Eighth Street and to South Gar, uh, to South Garfield Street. Uh, utilities existing four inch water line and analysis of the water line will need to occur to determine if an upgrade is needed and a fire flow test will also be needed. For wastewater, we have an existing eight inch line that terminates at the southern end of the property. The applicant will be required to decommission any existing septic and connect to the public wastewater line. Uh, currently there are no public storm, uh, stormwater lines and any existing line, overhead lines will be required to be underground and any new connections will also be required to be undergrounded. Here is, uh, the preliminary plat. I have outlined the site area in red and you can see the proposed individual lots. Um, in yellow, there will be eight residential lots and there will also be two tracks, um, tract A and tract B, which will be part of the stormwater facility. So per fifteen point one hundred point zero five zero subdivisions with certain conditions require a public hearing and that is why we are here tonight. Um, so we look to, uh, fifteen point two three five point zero three zero, which states any subdivisions that contain a gold five resource listed under the Oregon statewide planning goals, um, which are as, uh, natural resources, scenic and historic areas or open spaces. Um, and as shown previously, the northwest corner of the lot contains a stream corridor overlay and a tributary to Shahealem Creek. So therefore this preliminary plat subdivision has been processed as a type three. Again, the rev- review criteria tonight will be for the stream corridor overlay, the land divisions for the preliminary plat approval criteria and type one adjustments and approval criteria. So I'll begin with the storm, uh, stream corridor, excuse me, uh, activities that comply with the criteria of fifteen point three four two point zero five zero. And the restoration standard shall be approved by the director, or in this case, the planning commission. Tract A will include a stormwater facility that will discharge into tract B. This most closely relates to the activity outlined here in, um, subsection B, which is a private or public service connection laterals and service utility extensions, uh, where the disturbed area shall be restored pursuant to fifteen three four two zero six zero. Um, mitigation plans submitted by the applicant state that they will comply with the standards for the installation of the facility. Um, but further plans will need to, uh, be detailed regarding the mitigation plans for the discharge into the track B. So the image on the site here has been rotated, um, from the previous images and that was just so, so we get a little bit closer look. So north is actually to, uh, the left. So I just want to make sure that everyone could see that the area, um, in the left uh, part of the picture is actually the northwestern corner of the property. Um, the boundaries of the, uh, stream quarter sub-district are typically, um, located, uh, at the top of the bank or fifty feet from the edge of a wetland. Um, so you can see that the primary building, uh, billable portions of the lots are located out of the stream corridor. Again, restoration standards will be met and stormwater will be discharged into the stream corridor. And a final review and compliance will be determined during the public improvement permits. So next we're moving on to the land division criteria fifteen two three five zero five zero that addresses if the lots of, on the, of the preliminary plat comply with our development standards listed in fifteen four hundred. So the proposed. So the proposed uh plat shows that lot sizes will range from three thousand seven hundred eighty five square feet to five thousand eight hundred nineteen square feet. Uh for a average lot size of four thousand six hundred fifty six. Um and the R two is a minimum of three thousand square feet, so this criteria has been met. Uh it also requires um that uh each lot have uh street frontage of twenty five feet, so lots one, two. Three and four share twenty five foot access easement, lots four, six and seven, each have approximately forty feet of frontage. And then lot eight, which will have the existing duplex, has approximately hundred and seventy, hundred and seventeen feet of frontage. Um street trees will be required on all lots that have direct street frontage. Also included in our development standards are lot coverage and parking. Uh these elements are not required to be reviewed at the time of a preliminary plat and will be reviewed for compliance during individual lot building permit applications. Uh this is with the exception of lot eight, which will include the existing duplex, and I will address that um in further slides. But all of the criteria for fifteen four hundred development standards that are applicable at this time have been met. Preliminary plat criteria require all individual lots to be accessible and public improvements to support the lots that are present. Access will be provided by the extension of South Garfield Street and the proposed stub for a future connection to South Lane. Water will be provided by an extension of the existing line in South Garfield and the new wastewater line connection to the existing line in South Garfield will also be required. Storm model, storm water will be managed through planters and an underground detention system without fall within the stream corridor. Next, we have um proposed plat name. A plat name was not provided at this time, but has been conditioned to be submitted for review and approval with the final plat application. The plat name will be unique and shall not be recorded with an existing plat. Final uh, excuse me, the uh final plat should show the proposed infrastructure is adequate to serve the proposed development. Final plans meeting all city of Newburgh public works, design and construction standards will be submitted during the public improvement application. This includes but not limited to street improvements, street lighting, and public utilities easements and a stormwater report that will address the outfall with the stream corridor. Private, excuse me, private improvements are identified on the plat and maintenance agreements are in place. Um this track A and track B are elements of the stormwater detention facility and are conditioned to have maintenance agreements recorded. Utility and access easements for lots are also required to be recorded on the final plat. A condition has been added to um or excuse me, uh required state and federal permits have been obtained. Um this is one of the criteria as well. Um wetland delineation determination report approval from Department of State lands is required. Per uh fifteen two three five zero four zero plat submission requirements due to the site being located within the stream corridor area. The applicant's wetland, the applicant's um wetland consultants preliminary port determine no wetlands on site and Department of State lands concurred with this report. And submitted their approval on December eighth, and that is located in attachment three of your staff report. Um a condition has been added to encourage the applicant to work with D S L to ensure development design meets their preference. The last criteria here is improvements required by service providers have been or can be met. To Walton Valley Fire and Rescue Service Provider. Um a permit was required uh and was obtained and the preliminary plat was approved. Again, this is in your attachment three of your staff report. So moving on to the code adjustment um criteria, again, this this is applying specifically to lot eight, which is the existing duplex. Um per the code, the director may approve a twenty five percent reduction in the front yard uh to the front yard setback. Um due to the location of the existing duplex and the proposed extension of South Garfields and the proposed stub for the future connection to South Blaine Street. These these developments created substandard setbacks for the duplex. So therefore, um the proposal for the garage setback is to be fifteen feet, which is a twenty five percent reduction. And the proposal for the street side yard setback will be reduced from fifteen feet to twelve point one feet, which is a nineteen percent reduction. So all adjustment criteria were met and all development standards such as lot coverage and parking requirements were also met for the duplex lot. So lastly, we have um some supplemental info uh information that was provided. Uh it was a public comment that was submitted anonymously to the um. The department on March sixth. So the first um part of the comment and uh was uh that the. The commenter said that to develop the proposed connection to Blaine Street first, um prior to approving the subdivision. Unfortunately, that is not applicable criteria to the preliminary plat. Um municipal code cannot require the future connection to be made or development to occur on private property. Uh comment two was make the home single family rather than multifamily. So House Bill two thousand one mandated that duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes would be allowed in all residential areas. The municipal code cannot arbitrarily dictate what types of homes can or cannot be built. These standards are addressed in our development standards and they were implemented to comply with House Bill two thousand one. Um the lot sizes that are proposed will allow either a single family or duplex dwelling. And then the last part of their comment was to protect wildlife specifically with access to water. Um and then uh the municipal code has criteria to protect the development encroachment into the stream corridor, which we did address tonight. So this brings me to staff's recommendation is to adopt flying commission order two thousand twenty two dash fifteen, which approves the requested subdivision preliminary plat. And code adjustment with the findings shown in exhibit A and the conditions of approval shown in exhibit B. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to uh. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Dale. Um. I'm gonna go on page fifty eight of three hundred and sixty six. Towards the bottom of the page, it's talked about the preliminary plans show the entire proposed store water system. Might need to be private. It's unclear from materials submitted if this could be achieved with the proposals of the preliminary design. If it is not allowed, then track B containing the stream corridor will be a. If there is a public uh. We can't have a public facility in a stream corridor. So if it was not to fly for some reason, where would it be on the track?
Senior engineer Brett Music, I can answer that question. Related to what the conditions related to is. The city does not take and have stormwater facilities as in have the encumbrances of a stormwater facility or a stream corridor or other types of encumbrances like that with wet ones. We don't take those on. So if if we're not able to determine that it can be a. A public facility that it can be waste on the other criteria to meet with meeting our public works and design standards, there would need to be a separate tract created in the final plat scenario that separated out. The stormwater facility and have it outside of the string quarter. Okay, I'll I'll go over that again. So with the with with the condition it's it's been given. The city does not take and have stormwater facilities that they're going to maintain that are inside that have in it, the property has a concomitant such as a stream corridor or wetland or items like. Like that. So the condition is written such that if we're not able to determine, if otherwise it's able to determine to be a public facility. Then it would need to have a separate tract created at the time of the final plat. That separates out the stormwater facility portion away from the stream corridor portion of the property. On the same property. Essentially, if you could bring up kind of that site plan that kind of shows that. The line work of the stream corridor follows the alignment of the stormwater facility fairly closely. So that's shown on that. So that's all on track A. It would need to be separated out essentially following the stream corridor boundary to create another tract. It would become the public tract for the stormwater facility.
Thank you, Brett. I appreciate that. And then I only have one more question or. Uh and you, this might be for you, Doug. Um. One of the letters submitted by Ms. Thomas brings up the issue. Of existing, okay, some of the terminology in here. That talks about the uh. Builder. Okay, all the stormwater facilities being installed here will be private and the responsibility of the maintenance will fall upon a H O A or adjacent homeowner. Do any of those adjacent homer owners are on tax locks four six nine one? Four two zero zero, four two zero four, four two zero one and four two zero three. They are the ones that are surrounding the property. Is that limited to the property only by law? And none of the surrounding. Houses.
Again, that is would be related to the facilities as part of this subdivision, not any of the existing lots that are part of that. Part of the only the facilities that are connected with that.
So that would be a clarification for that letter submitted. Thank you very much. And then one last one, um there is an autistic child that lives in the area. And I wanted to know if the work crews can work with that family. And even meet with the child and uh if this is approved. Uh provide something like a her favorite colored heart hat, orientate her to the causes of noise. And such in issues, would they be willing to do that?
Uh Commissioner, I think that would be a question to propose to the applicant after they've given their presentation.
Great, thank you.
Very well, any other commissioners with a question for staff? Okay. Then we are moving on to the primary proponent and we're opening the public record. So if we have the applicant get up there and uh talking to the mic.
Scott Holden, I'm the the owner of the property.
Very well.
I don't have a presentation per se. Uh I'm happy to answer questions and uh and help uh alleviate some of the concerns if I can. And uh my goal is to um. Be a good neighbor. I have no intention of. Doing something that I'm not proud of or my children are proud of or anything like that. I'm gonna own this for for ten plus years. Um and uh there's no intention of of uh. Yeah, so anyways, I have a local property manager that'll manage this um the the properties and um. Yeah, I want to do a good job, so I'll let you answer some or ask some questions.
Okay, well, how how about uh Commissioner Wright's question about the autistic child from a minute ago?
So I'm happy to meet uh with anybody. I'm happy to meet with them. One of the, there's multiple reasons, uh and I guess I have to apologize for. The initial um plat uh submission, it was not uh well thought out on my part and it missed a lot of things that. Would have the precluded it forever happening anyways, so I it's uh it was definitely not my intention, but. I did read that specific letter. Um one of the, I shouldn't say it's a. Uh it's a contributing uh decision, I guess is a better way to put it, to keeping that existing duplex. Um uh you know, partly because it made it more simple for myself. Uh and and uh but I'm happy to meet with the um with them. And I've had multiple email discussions um with that child's mom. Um and I know she's concerned. Construction is loud. I don't know how to, I don't know how to not make that loud, um but uh but I'm willing to listen to to them. And uh if there's something that I can do to help to alleviate that, I'm absolutely happy to do it.
Well, thank you very much, um Commissioner Wright. Um I actually house a person who is autistic, close by that location. And uh sometimes they wear headsets to block out noise. Um you, those ear things where they can listen to music. Anything that would alleviate that child's stress and the parents and keep that child safe. And I I know if they get upset, they can run off. I wouldn't want her in any harm's way or. Anything like that to have.
I think it is beneficial that that the existing property is there because that backs up to them, so it 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 doesn't eliminate all those issues. But it definitely reduces them and uh and I'm happy again to um uh to do whatever it takes. And I that in my power, that's that's reasonable to help that situation.
Okay, any other questions or concerns from commissioners for the applicant here?
Yes, this is Commissioner Newton Curtis.
Please.
I read in um the brief here that. Construction is allowed from seven A M. in the morning until seven P M. in the evening. I believe that's what I heard or read, I'm sorry. Um, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to work with whoever the construction people are going to be to. To reduce the number of hours during the day so that at least it could start later than seven. Seven's even early for me, so.
Yeah, I I'm I'm happy to have those discussions. Um um and uh I I it's not, I don't know that it's something that I could. Guarantee, but I'm happy to have those discussions with those workers and try to to, you know, make those hours more palatable. Um I don't know that I can, but yes, I'm happy to have that discussion, I guess, if that's the, that's the answer to try to reduce those hours. Like so, I I don't know what the hours are. Uh this is my first uh my first ever subdivision, so. Uh when I get there, I'm gonna learn uh some of this stuff as I go. Um but I can be cognizant of that and and try to to. Uh limit the impact on the neighbors.
Okay, I think that would be really important.
Commissioner Wright, I have one more thing. On your preliminary plat map on page one thirteen. Of page three hundred and sixty six, the lower right hand corner, it actually shows. Or reads as one oh one East Ninth Street, and it should be East Eighth Street.
I think we had some discussions about what that. I I I, yeah, I'm not sure exactly. It'll be whatever the what whatever we're required to make it. I I don't know that we named that. I don't know that. We're we're clearly out of my depths.
No, I just wanted to let you know that uh the map is wrong, so when you do the final map, that address is corrected on there. To one oh one East Eighth Street.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh you may step down and and you will be given a chance to offer any rebuttal for any other uh testimony offered by anyone else. Who do we have next? Who is a proponent for this project?
Not seeing any additional proponents, Mr. Vice Chair.
Very well, who's our primary opponent?
I have a list.
Okay, uh do we have a um a spokesman, I guess, for uh someone, someone who gets the big time?
Know what the vice chair is asking, is there a primary opponent? So with the neighbors that have been there, have they appointed one individual to to represent to start off, because you have fifteen minutes to testify. If not. Then we'll just move into the uh testimony that we've received and each individual will have five minutes.
Correct.
So I will start with uh Laura Allen. Ms. Allen, if you go first. And who is that? Yes, we can have Mr. Townsend go first. You need to come up to the mic and press the silver button in the center.
Not question leadership or anything like that. Um before I start, I I asked ahead of time if I could go a minute over. And I was told I could, minute, minute and a half if need be, if you guys are okay with it. I'm thinking these people will mind.
That will lead up to the chair.
So uh uh Mr. Townsend, is it? Uh you're requesting for fifteen minutes, is that correct?
Oh, six, six minutes or so.
Six minutes. Sure, that's no problem.
All right, thank you. Well, my name is Art Townsend and my wife and I live on East uh Eighth Street. Her name's Claudia. We're adjacent to that Garfield development there. I want to start by apologizing for my misguided anger at our last meeting. Uh it was canceled because the developer was not prepared. And I just struggled with that. I'm still struggling with understanding how you can cancel a meeting when the developer wasn't ready, but I've moved past that. After some soul searching, I realized you guys are all apparently volunteers trying to do the right thing, and I think it's something we all have in common. We started off with a great deal of mistrust because of the process, not necessarily you people. It feels very much like the train had already left the station by the time we were informed about this development. And we want to thank you guys, whoever was involved in lowering. And we want to thank you guys, whoever was involved in lowering the density from twelve to eight lots. My wife and I and I moved here in twenty nineteen. After driving down Wynuski Street. And we've kind of fell in love with the turn of the century housing. We saw the wildlife sanctuary in the down, in that riverfront property in the quaint downtown. The first time we drove down Eighth Street was about twenty fifteen. We fell in love with it. We figured if we had to live in town, this was the street for us. Took us about three years to find a house on that street that went for sale. So I have a question for you guys. Have any of you driven down East Eighth Street? Can I get a show of hands?
I have.
Some of you have. Okay, good. It's a nineteen sixties era housing and a piece of Americana is the way I like to think of it. Uh, so after we moved here, to guess what happened? Uh, the House Bennett, uh, House Bill two thousand and one passed. You guys. That are on the board know what this is. The people behind me do not. It was passed on the last day of legislature and you guessed it, the year we moved here, twenty nineteen. It was passed on the last day of the legislature. It's what they call sneaking in an unpopular bill. Here's an excerpt from an article in the Willamette Week article by Nigel J. Quest, where he says, "The purpose of this model is to provide citing and design standards for duplexes developed on lots or parcels. That currently allow for development of detached single-family dwellings by overriding the current density codes." "The law will effectively end single-family zoning in most Oregon cities and allow the development of duplexes and townhouses where previously only single-family homes are allowed." "The idea is to promote the development of more and cheaper housing." So you guys have your hands somewhat tied by that state law and I'm sure you're thrilled about it as we are. My concern is this will not be affordable housing. When they're built, the benefits to the state required allowed housing will principally be to the developers' pockets. Not one low-income person in Newburgh can afford to buy or rent one of these units without government subsidy. Meanwhile, you destroy another quaint Newburgh neighborhood, alienate another group of people who you work for and at least you're supposed to be representing. I've spoke to uh multiple current and former city council members who told me if this housing development meets the guidelines, then we have to approve it. But then somebody allegedly changed the density. I don't know how that was done, who did it, why it was done. But it was done without the input of the neighborhood, as far as I can tell, because this is the first time we've been able to have a meeting about it. But again, it's the process, not you people that's to blame for this. So here's how Portland is trying to deal with it. The battle over single-family zoning in Portland and its scrutiny has grown increasingly tense. Because of the outrage, it's revamping rules around multifamily housing and what it calls better housing by design. City Commissioner Amanda Fritz says although HB two thousand and one mandates changes, it leaves room for interpretation. And for how to achieve the goal of creating more housing without destroying communities. It's a balancing act, Fritz says. It's not only how many homes do we have, but are they livable? This tells me that you people have some control over how this thing turns out. So we're left wondering why would anybody who obviously loves Newburgh intentionally destroy it? Well, as usual, in twenty twenty-three, politics enters into the equation. Is this about ending homelessness and increasing affordable housing in Oregon, or is it about the fifteen-minute city some of you know about? The concept was coined in twenty sixteen by Franco, by a Franco-Columbian professor, Carlos Moreno. Who argued that if everyone had more amenities in their neighborhood, it would be better for both the environment and the people who live there. And certain states like Oregon are just eating this thing up. I wonder if anybody thought to ask us, American taxpayers, if this is how we want to live. In essence, that's what this meeting is about. Newburgh has its own affordable housing plan. It gives tax breaks to developers. Monica and Gathers a forty-five thousand dollar tax break per unit. Let that sink in. The property must be offered for rent or held for the purpose of developing low-income rental housing. And the builder told us the city of Newburgh is requiring him to make these units rental only for ten years. Does anybody really think giving developers a forty-five thousand dollar tax break will lower the cow, housing cost in Newburgh? No offense, Scott. This is more than a, it's nothing more than a pa- a panic Band-Aid to a big problem. Without permanent government subsidy, these units will eventually rent or sell at true market value. You're effectively just feeding the beast if you approve this. East Eighth Street is zone R two, R three. So how do we end up with so many proposed duplexes? Because HB two oh oh one overrides any existing zoning. It's written right into the bill. I read it. So what if instead of giving developers forty-five thousand dollars per unit, we spent the money directly on building homeless shelters? Or better yet, give the forty-five thousand to low-income housing home builders for a down payment? This would make buyers out of renters, something we're all interested in doing. Please don't be fooled by this new state law. It's about politics, not about affordable housing. My final thoughts are, if you haven't driven down Eighth Street, please do. It truly is a piece of Americana. You should at least view it before you destroy it. At the end of the day, you're going to do what you want. All we can ask you to do is look in the mirror. You can talk all you want about the virtues of affordable housing or solving the homeless problem, but not one of you would volunteer to have a bunch of low-income rental duplexes. Forced upon you right next door to your own house, especially if you live on a quiet, dead-end street like we do. All we can do is shed light on it so the citizens of Newburgh know what you people stand for. Actions have consequences. Not one of the residents that I spoke to on the thirty houses on the on our street wants this, not one. Please do the right thing by your beautiful quaint little town. And most importantly, its citizens. Can anyone here tell me that these will not be low-income rental-only duplexes? Anybody? I didn't think so. That's all.
Wait, uh, just a second, Mr. Townsend. Please, please, we 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 get to ask you questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I was not compensated in any way for this testimony.
Uh, okay. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Townsend? Sorry?
Oh, he's online, okay. Hi, Jason.
Hi, how how are you? Does anyone have any questions uh for Mr. Townsend? Anyone, no one? Okay.
I bet you do.
I do not, other than to comment that I sympathize with your uh political views. However. You're correct in the first part where you say that our hands are pretty much tied when it comes to this kind of thing. Although I will say my own philosophy when it comes to this kind of thing is increasing the supply must reduce the price eventually. Now, we're we're constrained by supply a bit with you, urban growth problems, and I'll leave it at that, but uh. It's it's a, it's a very tricky issue and uh it actually goes a lot further than the state. It actually comes from um. How many housing and urban development, it's a national policy that which which uh. A lot of the other Portland people you you mentioned earlier are swallowing hook, line and sinker. But that's political commentary and this is a quadratitional hearing and so we're not really talking about that.
Well, Jason, and that's the reason that I took to start this thing out, wanted to apologize to you guys, because I was upset in our last meeting primarily because of. You know, canceled the meeting and uh it it just felt very disrespectful and and what the reason it feels so disrespectful is not. Because of you people, but because the communication that happens, we still don't even know what kind of unisies are going to be built in our own neighborhood. And it's just, it's unacceptable to me as a citizen of America that we don't know. What's going on in our own neighborhoods and it's the process, not the not.
With respect, with respect, this this owner owns the land, right? So people that own things get to do what they want with them within the confines of the law, isn't that correct?
Well, the yeah, but the problem is the laws are changing.
Well, that's not the owner's fault.
Well, no, it's not, but it's our problem now. And so we have a right to get up here and speak to it and say we don't like it and you guys hopefully.
And we're then we're listening.
All right, that's all I can ask.
Very well.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? Miss Commissioner Wright?
Uh, Commissioner Wright, I just wanted to tell you that.
All right.
Uh, you can, it doesn't matter. This is more like a uh statement. More than anything, affordable housing um is actually usually done by nonprofits and other coalitions. And as far as I know, we haven't had. Really anybody stepped forward to do uh things like that in the city of Newburgh.
Like offer up some property or something, you mean, or?
Um, actually build low-income housing.
Oh.
And it is eighty percent for a family of four for the main.
I read it, yeah.
Right, um. But unfortunately.
I I realize they have to live somewhere. Don't, don't, don't misunderstand my, I'm not.
We don't know if he's gonna have like a nonprofit come in there and. Do affordable housing because they actually have to have it with the deed for sixty years. That it's gonna be affordable housing.
Oh, interesting. I didn't know that. Uh, no, by all means, this is not meant to be prejudicial in any way. It it our biggest issue is the density, which you guys already have addressed. Somebody did. Brought it down from twenty-four units to if they're duplexes like we believe they are. To sixteen, but that's still an awful, a ton of traffic on that little street. Again, I encourage all of you to drive down this little street. We just had a neighbor, I met him tonight, across the street, just moved in. He's got two little kids, four, six, I'm guessing. You know, I want them to be able to play basketball in front of their house. I love the sound of kids in the street and and. You know, we're just putting it in danger. That's all. And we we live there and we plan on living there long term. Many of these people have lived on this street their whole lives. Some of them thirty-plus years on this street. Israel and Laura here next door to us have lived there forever. Uh, Joe, who's here, twenty-plus years on that street. And to have this happen to us without, or even knowing it was going on, just it just feels like it's been backdoored on us all the way. And I and again, I know it's the process, not the people involved, so. Okay, all right, thanks. Can I can I leave now?
Very well, thank you, Mr. Townsend. Uh, who do we have next?
Mr. Vice Chair, we have Laura Allen.
Ms. Allen, please step up to the mic. And you have five minutes.
We we've really enjoyed living on this street. We see the people going by with their strollers and their puppy dogs and their little kids. All the time. My husband and I use a walker often. He uses a. Uh, hover around. And it's been wonderful that we can go down the street because there aren't sidewalks very much. We had to put a sidewalk in our driveway. Although it goes to nowhere. Uh, for future development. And we're not looking forward to that future development because most everybody will be losing parts of their yard and their trees that they've had for years. Uh, but. The wildlife has been a real joy there. They come up and they eat in our garden and we don't mind sharing with them at all. And one of our neighbors put out a bunch of shrubs they planned on putting in it into his yard. One day and during the night they came and the deer came up and ate them all. That's okay. We like the deer. We won't be seeing the deer after you get through with that covering that waterway. We just won't be seeing them anymore, or the raccoons or any of the other animals. Um, the loss of the single-family home. He's already addressed. That's really hard to see happening and we don't know what these duplexes are gonna look like. If they're gonna, but the main thing is that it's a dead-end street now, Garfield. And there's no way to get back to those developments without coming up and down on that dead-end street. And it's gonna be a bottleneck on Eighth Street. It's gonna be a bottleneck. When they try to get off at eight to get on to Blaine. It's just, and if we ever have. A disaster back there, a fire or something, it's gonna be real difficult to get to. I was. Saw that you talked to the, to the fire department. I'm thinking, where's their head? Didn't they look? There's not gonna be a way to save the homes back there. And possibly the whole neighborhood will go up. But it's just, there's no way to get there and out. Before proceeding with this development, I wish, I just wish that Scott would have. Decided to make a legacy for his family and the very back part of it uh. Put in a park. That would have said, you know, this is a Holden Park and it's a wonderful place and we've got animals here and everything's, it would have been a. A real boost to the city. Then if he had to still develop the three lots down uh letter, low or lower on Garfield. Okay. That would, that we could put up with, I mean, a lot better, but uh. The, like I said, the wildlife aren't gonna be able to get water. They're gonna be driven off by all of this stuff. Uh, and that's part of what makes the Newburgh really beautiful. We go through town now and we see. Down by the waterfront and all these different areas where put, where they're putting in these duplexes that are. That are two or three units high. It's not the same town. It just breaks your heart to go through it. So that's my main thing is the access to Garfield up and down. If they had some way they could move, use that easement that goes through. From the uh east side that goes through the school property and gets on the Blaine so that there could be traffic both ways. That'd be wonderful, but I don't think there's any chance of that happening because that's school property. And uh, but that would be. So much better. But that's my big thing, okay? Anybody?
Uh, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Allen?
Uh, I'm just curious for my own benefit. If that road was in place. Would you be supportive of this?
Yes, although I still would have reservations because of the, of the wildlife and so forth, but. At least we wouldn't be in the danger of burning up. Having a a real tragedy through from a fire or something, because you just can't get up and down that street and and out on the eighth. It's. If you drive over there, you'll see what I mean. There's just not room. There's only just a couple people. Using that street now and it's not good. But if you've looked, if if they're making these too high. The duplexes, two families, look, just add up the math of how many cars, because most people have at least one. Possibly two. You add up how many people are gonna be using that street. And Eighth Street and it just, it's overwhelming. There, there's just no way. That you can safely have that and you sure won't have the families walking down, up and down uh Eighth Street with their. Baby stroller and things. It's gonna be dangerous, very dangerous.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Allen?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Newton Curtis. It's not really a question for Ms. Allen. It's more a question for Doug. I know that um we don't require a a traffic study because of code. Yeah, I apologize. I'm not very good at speaking into the microphone. Um, I believe code doesn't require a traffic study. But I do know that Jeff Cosmicke, the chief of police, was also concerned about parking and traffic, so I'm wondering. If it might be a good idea to voluntarily, as a city, do a traffic study.
I will let our senior engineer respond to the traffic study requirements.
Yes, this senior engineer brought music as Commissioner Newton Curtis indicated the code. Uh, requires a traffic study when there's a, an increase of forty PM peak hour trips with the with the proposed development at eight. Eight uh, eight lots. If there was duplexes on that, that gets us to sixteen and it's one trip per single-family home equivalent to a single-family home or duplex. Duplex would be two, so six. So that's. Okay, let's try that again. Let's try that again. So as the, as the Commissioner Newton Curtis had indicated, the the code requirement for traffic study is when a, when there are forty PM peak hour trips. Or more are required or are triggered. With the single-family home, that's one trip per. For home, so with the with the eight. And actually, we have seven added lots. That's fourteen trips per day. If you're in the PM peak hour scenario is where that requirement is at, so we don't have a requirement of the applicant to do so.
But right, the problem with that study is, is that's for all streets. And that's not providing any sort of like. A policy like that is if we have to a traffic study and it's under forty cars, what if I, the street only has three houses on you?
Beg your pardon, but uh, Ms. Allen is is the one that has the time right now.
I don't mind. The thing is, if these are duplexes. That's two families, not one. And there's, there's eight, then there's already two duplexes there and there's already another family using that street. So you've got multiple families going many times. It's not just gonna be forty. It's gonna be way more than that. And then you've got them going on to eighth. And coming out on to Blaine and it's gonna be a bottleneck. Just pray for us if there's a fire. Just pray for us.
Ms. Allen?
Commissioner Wright?
Um, firefighters are pretty stealth and they've got that whole. School lot to go through and I could see if a fire started back there, I could see them using the school lot. To go back in there and they can cut. To go back in there and they can cut that fence, boom, and they're in. And you will have a street right to that fence come um, according to the plat plan. My father was a firefighter and. I hear stories like that all the time. And we have a very good fire department here. And I would think that they would do that. In order to save people.
Well, it's by understanding that the that the school properties. Have uh, anatarius type. Problems, so they. They have to have those fences in place. I can see a real problem if they start cutting fences to get back there.
Well, no, um, just to do it for temporary emergency and then you redo it. Immediately afterwards. In the state of an emergency, I could see that being a potential access route.
I wish there could be a way out. Another way. That could be there all the time. So that we're not always.
And that's why the city code, um, when a person goes to plat. They agree to, if there's a connection route that is foreseen in the future. Like going through the school yard parking lot. Um, but as you recognize that the uh, school probably is not gonna sell that anytime soon. Or things like that, and I'm not sure they would even allow traffic through there in the state on that property as it is. But there's always the future. And with the other properties coming in or urban growth boundary. They may change that lot someday.
Right, well, that that'll take care, that help us in the future, but we've still got all that traffic to deal with.
Oh, yeah.
Coming and going. Day and night.
Yep.
And it's not gonna be good.
Yeah. Well, even if uh, they had a duplex on them. Or a residential home and you have two for eight, that's sixteen. If you have a duplex, sixteen is thirty-two and that's still under four forty.
Right.
Trip, so.
There's already a duplex on that street.
I know, but by law, um, they're under that threshold. So it unfortunately, uh. The code already covers it what they're, what is going to be allowed. And if they had any more buildings in there than that, they would have to comply with the parking lot issues.
Okay, I haven't, haven't added it up, but. These other, can I point to the map?
Oh, yeah. Doug, is the city um, allowed to incorporate those into the? Uh, trips, uh. Peak trips, or is it limited to literally the property only?
There we go. Thank you. My goes green. I know we're oversubscribed. Uh, it's limited to the development. So it's the uh, eight lots. If there were. Duplexes on each lot, that would be six sixteen, that's. Underneath the forty. Do not count any of the existing.
You don't count the existing that's already using? Using that street?
Not for the purpose of the way the code is written. It's for the development and the trip generation that's occurring from that new development.
That doesn't make sense. If you've got a. Uh, apartment that's using the street that should be that what concerns the street traffic. Not just the project, but the street traffic. What's really impacted?
Yes, I I appreciate that, but by law and us having to go by law. And the city by law. According to what Doug is uh, confirming with me. We can only during the plating of this consider the trip issues on that property solely.
This is Commissioner Newton Curtis. So Doug. Are we saying that? If code says that, you know, we can only take the duplex traffic into consideration. Does that mean that we're not allowed to voluntarily? Do a um, traffic study?
So the code is written that for a development, if that development generates more than forty PM peak hour trips, that they have to do a traffic study. There's nothing in our code for the city to do a traffic study on behalf of the applicant. Now. If this commissioner wanted to do a traffic study, then we have issues about. Where's the money budgeted for? Because nothing like that was anticipated to occur in this particular fiscal year.
Is that something that would ever be legally allowed by the city?
It would require a change to the development code. And we know that those processes take about. Six months.
Uh, this is Commissioner Capri. Could I just ask a question that I'm kind of confused on? When you're totaling up to thirty-two. Peak hour. Times, that is that assuming there's only one vehicle per resident?
Yeah. That was me sharing that gave those stats, but Brett Music is about ready to talk.
Yes. Yeah, so the trip rate for the PMP power for a single family home based upon institute. Transportation Engineers Traffic Guidelines is what we use for the trip generation and do those estimates for that. It's one trip PMP hour trip. Per single family home.
But.
And that takes into, that's those studies take into account that some homes have multiple cars, some have. In zero cars, it's a walking arrow, but that comes into that on that average, that is that one. One trip per single family home.
Hmm, that's interesting. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it seems like for for duplexes, there's more than that. And. If we're gonna be good neighbors. Maybe we need to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allen. Who do we have next, Doug?
We have Amber Hickman. Pucci?
Yep.
Wanted to make sure I. Said it correct.
Is that a hyphenated?
No.
Okay, Ms. Pucci. Sorry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners for allowing this avenue for communication. I too live on uh, West Eighth Street, actually. Just a magical line in nowhere that suddenly is Eighth Street, oh, West Eighth Street. Um, and in. And uh, to an amendment to the previous conversation. Um, I think this is a special situation as far as traffic studies because there's only one outlet off to blame. So all the individuals that will live in this plot, plus all the duplexes that already exist and all these kind of wonky flag lots we have. Makes a lot of density all using one exit into the world. Um. So in conversations with our neighbors, that's something to take into consideration. Um, you know, the folks that walk Eighth Street, that's the only exit for anybody that comes in Eighth Street. So it's not only Garfield, but it's the the flag lots behind there and all the way down to the creek. There's homes there and there's a flag lot back there with more um, apartment housing. I'm getting nervous, so my voice is changing, but I got this. All right. Um, I want to thank uh, Ms. Smith and the Commissioners for um. Your willingness to communicate. Um, I want to comment that there's. Been a lot of changes and it's been kind of frustrating to figure out the system. And so any encouragement I can make to help. Ease the public education on how the system works would be great. I'm a former school teacher and I love flow charts and I just wish there was one that I could understand so I could see where we were coming and where we were going and what iteration we were on. Um, but I know we're all doing our best. I'd like to first talk about, um, of course. Uh, the traffic is something I'd like to talk about at the end, but I know I have five minutes. Um, something that hasn't been brought up um, yet from the public is. The stream corridor that's fifteen point three four and in this issue point oh six oh. The restoration standards for type one process, especially part C. Um. And it talks about how if there, this is in regards to trees and and urban canopy. And it says, and I know this is a a policy, but I just wanna think about it. As a group for a moment. If there's an existing tree that at breast height is six inches in diameter. The policy requires that three trees with an average diameter of one inch replace that. Tree. I understand that's policy, uh, and to quote my grandfather, if we keep doing what we done, we're gonna get what we got. And in our current situation of our urban canopy depletion. Uh, as well as environmental. Changes. I think we need to consider not doing what we've done and keep getting what we got. Especially in regards to a watershed that um, actually does fall. Into what I understood to be um, two, sorry. This is in regards to what Ms. Smith said in her uh, presentation. That the Department of State Lands determined in the policy on page fourteen or the report I read on page fourteen. That was linked to the bottom of this meeting on the website. Um, that it was determined there was one wetland in three waterways in this plot. And your presentation made it, made me believe that that was not accurate. Did I get that wrong, Ms. Smith? Oh, I'm sorry, maybe.
No, I I apologize. Um, the wetlands that are noted are actually outside of this property. Um, so that may be where the confusion is coming from.
So you're talking about the. The Department of. State Lands is talking about the corridor and you're talking about the property.
So maybe I'll try to clarify. So in the wetland delineation. Report that was submitted to the Department of State Lands is that there were wetlands found to the north of this parcel, not on this parcel. DSL did identify that there was a stream corridor. Because there is an intermittent stream that goes down through this unnamed. Um, so that's what the report said, and so that's what Ms. Smith was trying to identify is that there's no identified wetlands on this property. They're just off this property to the north.
So the northwest corner. The rules that apply fifty foot from the center of the stream for development apply to the northwest corner because it is a stream corridor, correct?
So the city has an adopted stream corridor and generally as Ms. Smith's. Said, you know, it's fifty feet from the center line or the top of the bank. And so back in nineteen ninety-six, I believe it was. The city hired an environmental consultant and evaluated all of its stream corridors that were within the corporate limits of the city. And in many cases, is that the edge of that stream corridor, which is a goal five protected resource area. Is wider than fifty feet from the center line of the stream. In some cases, it's wider than. The top of the bank where you see that kind of transition that occurs. So in this particular situation, the line is actually clear up at the top of the bank. Much further away from where that intermittent stream goes down through there. So the city adopted and developed regulations in order to protect all of the stream corridors within the city. Um, with some caveats. There are times that you, such as this, where you have to have stormwater outfall to be able to get down to that stream channel. So you have to treat that stormwater first to remove. Pollutants. So there are rain gardens, there's the underground component of this one. Then it goes to an outfall and then it cheats down and ends up down into that. Uh, channel, that intermittent stream channel in the future. You are correct that in construction of tract A. Portion of that and then that pipe that will go in this map. Um, to my left, to the west. No, you're fine.
Yep.
Is that there will be an outfall down there. So. As they're building that, if there are any trees that are larger than six inches in diameter, they're gonna have to mitigate the replacement of those tree. Of those removed trees with new trees and those new trees will grow over time. All trees have a lifespan. Uh, associated with them. So that's what the conditions we're getting to about that final design through our design and construction standards of how that outfall. Dissipators of the water and so forth in order to discharge it down into that intermittent stream.
So even in that corridor, the policy stands six inch at breast height replaced by three one inch average diameter.
So it's technically, it's not a policy, it's a criteria.
Oh, sorry.
They have to, that's okay. It's in the world we work in. Policy sets the stage for criteria, goals set stage for policies. Um, so there are criteria of what they have to do to mitigate if they remove any trees that are larger than six six inches in diameter above. In addition. Any disturbance of the ground cover, they have to re-vegetate that as well. So this is. Happened in many places in Newburgh where developments have occurred and they discharge into these stream quarters and and they've had to go through this process of. Mitigating. Removal of trees and re-establishing the understory so we don't have erosion problems in the future.
Thank you. Um. Uh, the. The concern. Um, did what, do what you did, get what you got. And the new understanding of science and how trees. Um, produce urban canopy. So in in terms of the canopy. Um, if there are not mother trees within the microizable network. Circumference of the tree, the probability of them living. To fruition goes down and the speed of growth goes down. Um, so. As a citizen in Newburgh, I maybe am a proponent for. Keeping that canopy as much as we can. Um, but we also have to get rid of our wastewater and there's ways to do that. Okay, so. That's fifteen point three four two point oh six, I'll part part C. Um. And that had to do with the urban canopy. Now, I'm not a land surveyor, but my husband is, so that gives me. Um, some confidence of of looking at the plot and it does look like there will be. Three trees for sure of that circumference, if not more. So it'll be great to see that mitigated. Um, moving on to.
Mister, Mister Chair, I wanted to let you know that uh, we are now at eight and a half minutes.
Okay, uh, if we can wrap this up, uh, if you just have any uh, final thoughts, please, Ms. Pucci?
I do. Thank you. Um. I live on West Eighth Street, so um, if you were to exit from Garfield, you would take a right and then it dead ends at. Uh, the tributary to Shaheenam Creek. At this point, our driveway is kind of the last line of sight before the the street ends. So we are. Become a turnaround. Our driveway becomes a turnaround for uh, folks that find themselves at that dead end. Um. If this project goes forward with this many residents moving in, I'd love for brains to think of ways. For our driveway not to become a turnaround uh, for all those folks. Um, just a guesstimate of how much it would cost to redo our driveways in the tens of thousands and I have two kids who wanna go to college. Um, thank you for your time, uh, and I appreciate Commissioners and staff.
Thank you. Just before you go, any questions for Ms. Pucci?
Uh, Doug. That Miss, um, is it possible to post a no through street? On that road?
I imagine there's already dead end street postings.
I'm not, the senior engineer brings, I'm not clear if there is. I believe there should be one there. Yeah, so I I can voice another element for this piece of it. We do have the Traffic Safety Commission and. Kind of with, there's a concern with signs on Eighth Street itself for making it clear of outlets and things. That's a potential avenue to submit something through that. And I I will make a note of it as well to kind of look at it and be aware of of that for future.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Pucci?
Commissioner Wright, I really appreciate you're talking about the tree canopy. Um. And it is known that they will try and retain whatever trees down there and the recent three are being. Replanted in lieu of the one is uh, pulling up water. By the time they uh, the tree canopy gets out, it'll pull up a certain amount of water at a youth stage, but by the time they grow up. But by the time they grow up, it should be equal to calculating for death potentially of one of those trees. It should be equal to the amount that a larger tree pulls out. But I am at some point going to. Talk at the end of one of our meetings about a tree code here. So and I we've got some ideas like us, we go. If you cut a tree down, you get a permit and if you can't put one back in your yard, they use that money to then plant another tree somewhere. Within the city boundaries. And that's a win win. So thank you for bringing that concern up. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from Miss Pucci? Okay, thank you.
So Mister Vice Chair, that was all of sign forms we had for opposition. So this would take us back to the opportunity for the applicant to make any rebuttal comments.
Right before we do that, to just make sure that we have everybody, did everybody get a chance that wants to say something in opposition? Speak up or for or hold your peace? Anybody on Zoom or online?
There is one, Jason. Hold on just one second.
Thank you.
I wrote a letter as well. I'm Debbie Thomas. And I want to thank you for your excellent work for our city. I really appreciate um this process and your excellent report. I live right there, right in the middle that that orange box. That's where I live, right in the middle of all of this. Um, and the one thing that I want for my community is I want to live in a thriving community. I want to be a part of a thriving community and I want any neighbors who come to thrive along with the rest of us in our community. And I think the biggest concern that we've had is the density. You've heard it over and over again. Um, and I have understood your answer to us that we cannot discuss. Um, parking issues and if these are duplexes at this point in time, because we um, this is. The plat review is not where we discuss these things. It's discussed at another point in time. And it occurs to me that it might help us to understand um when and where and how. Um, who will be making those decisions? And if we were assured um that there, I think our fear is that it's going to be one big parking lot all down Garfield Street. And that we won't be able to get in and we won't be able to get out and it won't be a livable, thriving community for all of us. Um, and I think if we understood a little bit better what the process is coming up and if we could trust that process. Um, that it's not going to be that way. When we see some of the new developments with the small plots and the tall skinny houses. We we see the cars, you know, all along the street. And in our minds, it looks like we're going to have tall skinny houses, but two of them on every plot. And there's no streets for the cars, right? And so I think that for us, we just. We we want to live in a thriving community and we want to welcome neighbors into a thriving community.
Very well. Uh, any questions? I'm I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Dr. Thomas.
Dr. Thomas, Dr. Thomas, okay. Uh, any questions for Dr. Thomas?
I do want to thank for your permission of your letter and raising your concerns and I hope that was clarified as part of the stormwater treatment. Of not being a cost to you in the future or the existing properties.
That was very helpful. Yeah.
Okay, uh, Dr. Thomas, I would just offer you a little bit of advice and that's to maintain contact with the property owner and the developer. And and try to be involved with the with the uh with the design process is if. As much as you can when when this thing gets to that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and so that's that's all we have. Do we have anyone online or Zoom?
Fay said no.
Okay, thank you Fay. Okay, at this time we'll allow the uh the owner to come back and rebut anything he feels he needs to rebut. And I believe we have five minutes for rebuttals. Is that correct, Doug?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, quick. Um, a a couple just points of clarification. Um, one uh that I I couldn't wasn't sure if low income housing was positive or not positive. Uh, but this doesn't work as low income housing, so it it doesn't, it won't be um. The as far as official low income housing, obviously you can't discriminate people that can can pay uh the rent or whatnot, but it won't be low income housing. And it's not the city that's requiring me to hold this for ten years. It's the it's a it's a federal opportunity zone designation. What's a state designation, but it's a federal program. Um, and so uh that was just a clarification. I didn't want anybody to think that the city was making me keep this for ten years. A couple just thoughts on design, uh, everything that I've looked at to put there is two stories, uh, not the three story uh things that I know that you're talking about. Um, not a particularly uh big fan of those, but um. I'm gonna abide by all the codes, all the the criteria and um and I can't do anything about the parking or the or the traffic. I can't fix that. I'm just trying to do the best I can to meet the the requirements and I and I will do my best to do that, so. Questions?
Okay, any any uh any questions from commissioners for is Mister Scott, isn't it?
Scott, Mr. Holden, Scott.
Mister Holden, excuse me.
Scott.
Any questions? Okay, uh, I just have one comment and that's uh, you see, there's there's a fair amount of issue with this. I don't think it's necessarily directed at you in particular or more about the frustration with laws. Uh, coming from the state, so I would just be uh be aware of that with your dealings with your neighbors and uh try to maintain patience and just do the best. Everybody do the best they can to work together. And this this will all come out just fine, I think.
I I haven't been shy about sharing my voice or my email or my my phone number, so I'm I've been open uh for anybody that.
There you go. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I'd like to close the public record. And get final comments from staff.
Staff have no further recommendation, um, just others to adopt the planning commission order uh twenty twenty two dash fifteen.
Very well, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff based upon test public testimony?
Um, Commissioner Quinn, I did have one question. I can't I can't find it at the moment, which is why I'm glad I wrote the note down. I was curious, was there a determination about the um the house numbers on the existing homes in the area needing to be changed to meet the emergency response standards? For that, or was that determined not necessary?
That will be a process that will come later. Uh, there is address assignments. Uh, we are aware that some things happened historically that we wish. Would not have happened the way that they did. Um, so we will be working with Mister Holden about addressing. Um, we will have to work with some of the existing property owners as well about addressing.
It's more like how many properties come into play later.
Now, it's. We have to follow WACAS, which is the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency protocols on. Cause Twalton Valley Fire Rescue, their nine one one comes out of WACA. And so they have a set of guidelines and protocols about how we address. And so how Newburgh used to do addressing has changed once Newburgh annexed in to the to the F and R district boundary. So we have those, we coordinate with our GIS team who does the addressing, they've got the grids and so forth. And so we know in this situation, we've had other subdivisions where we've had to step back and say, oh, your address was this. And we have to look at it and have conversations. Do we need to change your address in order to follow the protocol? So but it's not part of the subdivision, tentative plat approval, it's processed later.
I just know there was concerns that were openly stated about the um fire safety and that earlier. And I wanted to point out that on page fifteen that the total to part Twalton Valley Fire Rescue has approved it at this juncture. Page fifteen of three hundred and sixty six. So for those concerns that are very important, they have been addressed at this point in the planning process.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll move on to deliberations. What do we think about this project? Any commentary?
Commissioner Wright, I'm glad the density went down. Um. I can see it being a lot more feasible. Um, quite frankly, with the previous plating, I would not have been able to say yes myself. Due to the conflict of parking issues, but having the uh density come down, it seems a lot more reasonable. I am concerned about stream corridor. Uh, the track B with the wastewater treatment facility. But there seems to be according to a bread, a way to get that out of the. Stream corridor if the city is involved with the uh. With that. Ownership. Anybody else have any other thoughts?
Uh, somebody pointed out earlier that we're volunteers. Yes. Wondering. Um. I've been on this a relatively short period of time and one of the things I've noticed is that people seem to look at us like. You know, you come up with all these concerns and we don't care. I think there's a misperception about the process. Uh, I went down the street last night. I went down the street again today. We don't have, we are not afforded discretion in most of these things. Uh, someone had mentioned that there has to be trust in the process. The landowner also has to have trust in the process that. The rules and regulations and laws that are in place today will be enforced. I don't think that uh rubber stamp is a fair characterization. But unless someone can point to the code or the regulation or the law. Uh, that is not being conformed with. We don't have any choice and if we did exercise discretion, then we give the landowner every right to appeal it to the city council. If they were to exercise discretion that they don't have, then it would go to the land use board of appeals. But I think I live in Newburgh, obviously, I I don't want people to think that we don't hear you. Uh, we do, uh, but what I'm beginning to learn is all these arguments. They needed to be made years ago when these laws were being passed. We're just the people, we're like the judge on it. We can't make the law and we can't change it. Uh, because we don't like certain things and I just want people to understand. Uh, I I take, you know, I volunteer, I read all this stuff, hundreds of pages. I went down there to look at it so that when I looked at the maps, I would understand it. I know no one uh likes additional growth. But we have an obligation to both parties and we have an obligation to follow what is in place. Unless what the applicant is proposing or someone on staff or all the people who have. Signed, whether it's the police department, the fire department, the cable people, the water people, sewer, all of those people. Then people will look at us and say, on what basis did you decline the applicants? And so I I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. I would if there was somebody, if there was a bus and there was somebody. But I just, I want you to understand it because we're people. I it this is a uh, maybe I should get off this. But I I just, I've noticed that people don't understand. They they look at us and then then we vote a certain way and you walk out like, well, what was all that about? They don't, you know, they don't listen to what we say. But I, we are obligated to follow what is in place. If it meets the requirements, then we must approve it. If we choose not to approve it. Then you can expect an appeal from the applicant and eventually someone is going to keep asking. On what basis did you disprove, was this not approved?
Very well, very well put. Thank you. Uh, I would also e- echo that exact same sentiment. It's a. It's it's. It's using. The law and. You know, uh, uh, the the reasonable interpretation standard, but you also have to have some sort of evidence if you're going to. Use that as a basis of criteria as as an example. We've had a lot of talk about traffic this th- this evening. So if if the opponents to this particular project as hypothetical had conducted their own traffic study. And use that and entered into their record as in a as a rebuttal to the city's numbers on on. Uh, what they think the traffic is going to be, then we would have some sort of basis to to reject upon, assuming those numbers came up, came out this. Disfavorably and absence of that, we don't have any evidence to support that other than opinion. And in the matters of opinion, we're obligated to go with staff's opinion. Uh, so now granted, people will say that that's that's unreasonable and it costs too much money and those things happen. Well, that's that's the avenue. I that's that's just how it is. So I I agree with that, but uh that's kind of kind of often the weeds about process and and overall things. So do we have anything else about the specific project? So do I have any motions?
At the risk of life, I make a motion that the planning commission. Uh, or approve. SUB three two two dash zero zero one. And ADJ C two three dash zero zero two for the preliminary preliminary plat of a subdivision at one hundred South Garfield Street.
Well, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Quinn, second.
Well, I have a motion a second. Uh, can we please get a roll call vote?
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
Very well, motion passes unanimously. And as a reminder to all the opponents, this is a really a motion for the city council to recommend this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Doug.
No, so Mister Vice Chair, so this is an order, so it's a final decision.
Is the final decision. Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody who provided testimony either here this evening or submitted written comments will be notified of the planning commission's decisions and the next steps.
Okay, and is there an appeal process to city council?
Yes.
Could it be fired?
That will be outlined in the decision letter that will be sent to the applicant and sent to all those parties who establish standing by either testifying or submitting. Uh, written comments.
Very well, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, I believe we have a conditional use permit number twenty three dash zero zero two. For a uh telecommunications facility at five hundred East Illinois Street. And I believe we need to again call for uh objections jurisdiction uh um and expertise contact.
You are correct. Abstentions, bias, expertise contacts and objections to jurisdiction.
Thank you. I almost had that. Okay, hearing none.
Chair, I'm not seeing any.
Uh, hearing none, we'll move on to the um, the uh disclaimer from Commissioner Hanson.
Sorry, okay. Um, ORS one ninety seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant. Prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony. Or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the land use board of appeals, L U B A, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level. Prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raisin or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of an approval in enough detail to allow the local government. or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of an approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant might request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Moving on to the staff report.
Thank you, Planning Commission. My name is Clay Downing. I'm the planning manager here for the city. And I'll be giving a presentation on this conditional use permit and minor modification application. One of the things I wanted to start off with is letting you know there have been a pair of I think it's three supplements that you've gotten for this, two of which would have been today for minor modifications. I wanted to highlight all each of those supplements individually, so you know exactly what was in them and don't have to go searching for what it wasn't in them. So the first one that you received on March seventh, that was related to an additional agency comment we received after the staff report was published. I believe you received that on March seventh. So the building official Brooks Bateman indicated that he had reviewed it. There was no conflict. So that was all the change there. And then um, earlier today, it was brought to my attention that the planning commission order had an error where it had January's planning commission date on, on the signing line or the kind of the signature component rather than today's. So that was modified. And then shortly before the hearing, it was brought to my attention something that I wanted to clarify now, and I'll touch again on in the presentation because I think there, there could be questions and clarify, uh, clarifying questions about it later when we get to deliberation or anytime. Um, but the item that we're talking about, the proposed project is for a tower modification that's submitted as an eligible facilities request for a minor modification that's covered under section sixty-four zero nine of the Federal Communications Commission's rules. Under an E F R, a state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for modification of an eligible support structure that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such structure. Additionally, this project is not appeal, is not eligible for appeal following the decision of the planning commission this evening. And so it will become effective tonight as opposed to becoming effective fourteen days from the decision, which is how things typically work, if that makes sense. So since, and so as a result, we had to make another small uh, revision to that, making the effective date different than what we typically had in there. So wanted to be clear that we went through and made those modifications so that it could be kind of the start hard and easy kind of a concept. So we made those extra supplements. But if you have any questions about what was uh, and anything else, then please let me know and from there I'll get started. I may have turned this on. Oh, I was pushing the laser, no power. Up, there we go. Get back to the beginning. Alright, so we'll be going through a little bit of the background, then through some of the analysis from the staff report, and then we'll be going through the applicable criteria. So the applicant in this case is AT&T Wireless. The agent on behalf of them is Debbie Griffin with Smart Link, who's also available and going to be making a presentation virtually after my presentation. Uh, KG and the owner of the subject property is K G I Wireless. This is a conditional use permit and minor modification approval for a co-location tower extension and expansion of a compound in an existing telecommunications site. The location is five hundred East Illinois Street, tax lot R three two one eight D D zero one zero zero zero. It's located in Light Industrial Zoning District or M two. And some of the primary criteria that we're going to be talking about are fifteen two twenty zero two zero E related to a type one minor modification. Fifteen point two twenty zero five zero A, a type one design review criteria. Fifteen two twenty-five zero six zero, general conditional use permit criterion. That's covered under a type three decision. Uh, and fifteen point four four five one nine zero telecommunications facilities criteria. So the subject area that we're talking about is the site information. So this is a, an existing development site that's approximately six hundred square feet in size. It's going to be expanded by four hundred and sixty-two square feet. It's located on a property or subject property that's six point one eight acres. It's primarily a flat area. There's really not much in terms of kind of landscape features, other than some perimeter trees and other landscaping that's already available on site. Current land uses are food, uh, food production machinery and telecommunications. The adjacent land uses, and you'll see on these slides, it's in parentheses, the zoning designation uh, to the north, a combination of mobile home park and single family residential. And that's R three and R two zoning designations. Uh, to the south, a combination of light industrial and single family residential, which is a combination of M two and R two zoning designations. To the east, single family residential or R two's zoning designation. And to the west, single family residential, also R two. So this is an aerial photo of the site. One of the things that I pointed out, the subject properties, that triangular one, you'll be able to see it in one of the other uh, the site map that'll be up in about two slides. But the project areas in that northeastern corner of the subject property, and that's the existing telecommunications facility. Uh, again, highlighting this, but this is the zoning that surrounds the area. So you can see that combination of industrial uh, R two and R one that surrounds the subject property. And then this is the site map. This would be part of the application materials that we put onto this slide. And you can see in that, um, that triangular shaped property that the lot that it's on is that existing telecommunications facility. This is a, a pair of the elevations that were also in the application materials. And on the left, we have the existing one. You can see that in the proposed, that's on the right. That tower is going to be extended as well as some additional um, equipment that's going to be co-located on that, um, around the base that the the site that the telecommunications facility at is going to be expanded to an extent. But there's also landscaping addition that may or may not be particularly easy to see on this particular slide. So some of the things that we, that were mentioned in the staff report, that this is an existing telecommunications facility, it was approved by the planning commission initially on March ninth twenty seventeen under C U P seventeen dash zero zero one and design review D R two one seven dash zero zero one. And so that was for the construction of a camouflaged wireless communication facility tower uh, and associated ground equipment. And one of the thing that I wanted to mention is in the, I tried to make it relatively consistent in the staff report, but we do use the term camouflage, which comes out of our development code, as well as the term stealth, which is a fairly common term for some of the same stuff. So you hear me use the term stealth or camouflage, those mean the same thing. Um, for this one too, as I mentioned earlier, when I was mentioning the supplements, this is an eligible facilities request for E F R for a minor modification as defined by section sixty-four oh nine of Federal Communications Commission rules. And so under that, there are some limitations to what the planning commission can do tonight. Um, specifically, a state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for modification of an eligible support structure that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such structure. The applicant submitted application materials that highlighted how they were basically documented and highlighted why they were eligible for this designation under the sixty-four oh nine FCC regulation. So the related E F R limits and sixty-four oh nine related regulations for telecommunications facilities and proposed project will increase the tower's height by fourteen feet as measured from the top of the highest existing antenna to the bottom of the proposed new antenna. I wanted to make sure I included the entire text for this because this is a specific method of measuring that is used in those sixty-four oh nine criteria. Many folks, if they would look at it, they might simply just measure how much the tower changed. But because of these FCC rules and regulations, we're required to use this specific criteria as one of those that we use to determine if it's a minor modification or not. This one, in this case, it also adds antennas that extend less than twenty feet horizontally from the edge of the tower and add one additional equipment cabinet to the facilities lease, lease area and expand the lease area eastward by fifteen feet. So in short, the applicant's submitted materials include a cover letter documenting E F R compliance under sixteen, section sixty-four oh nine of the FCC rules, including a demonstration of how the project meets these standards. Which means they documented it, we evaluated it as well, to make sure that they were in fact in compliance and they appear to be so, based on that evaluation. That's what's in the staff report. So now we'll be going into the criteria, some of the criteria or the, the criteria that are used in the evaluation of um, of this project that are in your staff report. So under fifteen point two two zero point zero two zero E modifications to an approved design review. Minor modifications are those which are in, in substantial compliance with the layout uses and conditions of the original design review. The proposed telecommunications facility modification will expand the lease area approximately fifteen feet to the east and one equipment cabinet at twelve antennas, extend the existing tower height and add concealment apparatus, again stealth or camouflaged to maintain the stealth nature of the faux monofur facility. And when I say monofur, I'm talking about a tree. So it's not really a tree. It's just intended to look kind of like one. The proposed modification of the existing wireless communication facility substantially complies with the original conditional use permit design criteria approved under C U P seventeen dash zero zero one and design review D R two seventeen dash zero zero one. Um, under the conditional use procedures are applicable criteria associated with conditional use permits or C U Ps. Section fif- fifteen point two two five point zero six zero A related to location, size, design and operating characteristics of the proposed development. This particular project includes proposed ground equipment that will be obscured by landscaping and a fence. The facility will be unmanned and the proposed minor modification will maintain the camouflage nature and existing stealth operating characteristics of the facility. Um, subsection B of fifteen two twenty-five zero six zero related to location design and site planning of the proposed development. Um, as it really, uh, will provide a convenient and functional living, working, shopping or civic environment and will strive to be as attractive as the nature of the use and its location setting warrants. So the location provides a functional, functional capacity improvement and, sorry. The location provides a functional and capacity improvement and coverage for AT&T Wireless and will contribute to the availability and quality of wireless communication service in central areas in the city. The faux monofur design is appropriate addition to the existing tower, in part because it is already camouflaged. The modification to the existing commu- telecommunications facility will not detract from the residential character of the area. Partially because it's consistent with something that's already there. Subsection C, the proposed development will be consistent with this code. The design review findings for section fifteen point two two, uh, two two zero point zero five zero A apply to the project as conditioned. The proposed development will be consistent with the city's development code. So in other sections, we also conducted review and it is substantially complies with development code. Therefore, we find that it's consistent with the code. So applicable criteria under design review, so fifteen point two two zero point zero five zero A, so relates to type one uh, decisions. The following criteria are required to be met in order to approve type one design review request, parking setbacks and general requirements, landscaping requirements, signs, zoning district compliance and sufficient infrastructure. So this will go on to, occurs on this slide as well as continued on the next slide. There is sufficient existing parking on the site and that's not expected to change and there's none proposed. There is not a height limit in the M two zone for telecommunications facilities unless it is within fifty feet of a residential district. The tower is located over one hundred and twenty feet from the nearest residential boundary. The site has existing mature landscaping and will add screening to the expanded ground equipment area with shrubs um, and a fence. The project does not propose any changes to existing signage or addition or addition of new signage. Proposed project identifies the existing telecommunications uh, facility which was previously approved under C U P seventeen dash zero zero one, design review D R two one seven dash zero zero one. Extending it to more than a hundred feet in height and the applicant has requested the issuance of a conditional use permit, which was required because it exceeded that one hundred foot height. Because the proposed project does not include a triplex, quadplex townhouse or cottage cluster dwelling, the criteria related to sufficient in, their criteria related to sufficient infrastructure is not applicable to this project. So applicable criteria, uh, section fifteen dash, or sorry, sixteen point four four five point one nine zero relating to telecommunications facilities. So this is under special uses section of the development code. Um, approval criteria. New transmission towers or replacement of an existing tower may be allowed based on findings of the approval authority that the following criteria met. And it goes on, but the project does not include new or replacement tower. Therefore, the criterion is not applicable. Uh, conditions of approval, section fifteen point four four five point two one zero, also relating telecommunications facilities. Um, this one, this slide includes and highlights sections A relating to agency statements and sections B relating to franchise agreements. The proposed modifications constitute an eligible facilities request, as we discussed earlier for minor mod- minor modification under section sixty-four oh nine of the Federal Communications Commission rules. Under an E F R, a state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for modification of an eligible support structure that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of the structure. Continuing. Because the proposed scope of work are an E F R subject to sixty-four oh nine, the FCC rules. Um, section N M C fifteen point four four five point two two one zero A is not applicable. And because the, because the project is not proposed to occur at a facility located within a public right of way, subsection B is not applicable. Uh, installation standards also from the telecommunications facility section fifteen point four four five point two two zero include sections A for shared use of existing towers. B for tower setbacks, C for guy setback. D requires sharing of new towers, E for visual impact, F for parking, G for vegetation, H for landscaping. So some of the items that are in the staff report and the finding section specifically, the proposed project meets the criteria for an E F R, therefore the applicant was not required to contact existing towers for, related to subsection or section A. The proposed project will modify and expand the use of an existing tower to accommodate the project's antennas and related apparatus. The project does not modify the setback distances or the guy anchors of the existing tower. The proposed project does not include a new or replacement tower. The project adds camouflage features to the modified project areas, maintaining the stealth nature approved under the initial conditional use permit design review under C U P seventeen dash zero zero one and D R seventeen dash zero 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 one. The project will not alter the parking requirements or traffic impacts for the telecommunications facility or the subject property. And then last on, on this one, the project will add a landscaping buffer to the eastern and western boundaries of the lease area. So with that, and I went through pretty, pretty quickly. Um, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. But the staff recommendation for tonight is staff recommends that the planning commission move to adopt planning commission order two zero two three dash zero five with conditions approving conditional use permit design review C U P twenty-three dash zero zero two and M I M D one two three dash zero 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 one for telecommunications facility equipment at five hundred East Illinois, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three two one eight D D zero one zero zero zero. And that is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner Wright, um.
Good.
The guideline wires with the extra added heights are still going to take the stress and weight of the additional tower?
We didn't go through a, a review of the specs associated with the structural integrity as part of the land use aspect of the project. We don't, we just don't have criteria for those things.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Capri, do you have criteria about or is it something that can even be talked about, about the impact of that radiation basically with the increased height? Does that spread it out further?
Um, Commissioner Doug Rocks, so uh, by FCC regulations, we do not evaluate uh, radio frequency and those environmental conditions. Um, so that's, nothing of that is in our code and we are not allowed to have that in our code.
Why is, I, I think that we've talked about this before a long time ago and we're talking about five G. And I just think that that's an interesting thing, you know, that would say, oh, we can't talk about how it's going to give you cancer.
Um, again, Commissioner, the FCC is Um, again, Commissioner, the FCC is has the authority over that. We do not have authority of that over at the local level.
Crazy. Okay, I I I knew that answer. I just was checking to see if that raised height could indicate maybe, or is there any regulations limiting the number of these stealth towers in the given area? I know I've got one. Uh, maybe a block from me. And then that one is maybe five blocks from me. Is there any kind of uh regulations of how many of those are going to be going in around us?
Um, that's why when these telecommunications towers uh get proposed, they have to come before the planning commission for a public hearing. Do we have a specific limitation on numbers like we do on marijuana dispensaries and separation distances? No.
Okay, that's unfortunate. Oh, maybe they will. Um, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Vice Chair, I also wanted to mention that we do have the applicant here and she's planning on presenting additional information related to the project. So she may give some additional details that I did not, if there are any uh questions waiting in the wings from the commissioners.
Okay, very well. And we're moving on to that everything. So at this time, I like to open the public record and give the applicant fifteen minutes to state or state their case and a uh primary opponent fifteen minutes to to talk against them. And then proponents and opponents get five minutes each uh in that order. So with the applicant, please step up to the mic.
Thank you for meeting tonight to discuss AT&amp;T's application. My name's Debbie Griffin. I work for Smart Link. I do have a brief presentation to share um that I shared with the city of Newburgh. I don't know if I'm going to have controls to share that presentation or if it's through the city. Somebody could.
Well, that might be asking a lot.
I'm, I do want me to share my screen?
Yes, Debbie will. She'll work to share the screen for you.
Okay, because I was going to say I can share my screen as well if I have the presentation up on my side as well.
Go for it.
Okay, I will do that. Let me get, let me get it set up here real quick. Need to be able to get in there. Says host disabled participant screen sharing.
We're working on that. We'll see what we can do in just a minute here.
I'm going to have to share the screen because I can't. I already have a co-host, so.
Okay, perfect. So I can just tell you.
Just say next slide and I'll do that.
Perfect. Okay, if you could go up to from the beginning, if you wouldn't mind. Okay, as mentioned, my name's Debbie Griffin. I work with Smart Link and I'm AT&amp;T's representative on their conditional use permit and minor modification for an existing wireless communication facility. The existing wireless communication facility or the proposed modification to the existing wireless communication facility qualifies as mentioned as an FCC section sixty four oh nine eligible facilities request. Next slide, please. Uh, Mr. Downing already showed this slide in his presentation, but uh the parcel is located in a parcel on a parcel zone M two light industrial. The uh existing ingress and egress is from East Illinois Street and the surrounding zoning is industrial, a little bit of commercial and residential. Next slide. This depicts the existing compound on the west side and the expanded compound on the east. Um, as you can see, AT&amp;T is proposing to expand the compound fifteen feet by twenty feet, eight inches to the east. Thirty feet is permitted via sixty four oh nine. The expanded compound area will be enclosed by a six foot chain link fence with dark brown privacy flats to match and tie into the existing fence and access will be via in a secure lock gate to the on the north side of the um compound there. Inside the compound will be a prefabricated two bay walkup cabinet and a backup diesel generator and they will both be lo- um located on a concrete pad. Next slide. AT&amp;T is also proposing to replace landscaping on the west side of the compound and install new landscaping on the east side of the compound. Well, private high screen shrubs will be installed for that landscaping. Next slide, please. This depicts the eligible facilities request for the tower, which is an existing ninety five foot monopole. It will be extended, the pole itself will be extended twenty feet to a new height of a hundred and fifteen feet. Um, a five foot conical, five foot conical top will be installed above the antennas for an overall height of of one hundred and twenty feet and that will give the foe monofor a more natural shape. Um, and it will screen the antennas at the top of the of the tower uh better. AT&amp;T will be installing four G and five G L T equipment at the top of the tower and the tower, all antennas and accessory equipment will be painted dark green to match the monofor branches. Next slide, please. The next two slides are an overview of the FCC Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety six and section sixty four oh nine. Uh forty seven CFR one point six one zero zero B three and eligible, ineligible facilities request is defined as any request for modification of an existing tower base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower base station, including one co-location of new transmission equipment. That is AT&amp;T's proposal here tonight. In forty seven CFR one point six one zero zero B seven substantial change. Uh, a modification substantially changes the physical, physical dimensions of an eligible I always said eligible facilities request of an eligible support structure if it meets any of the following criteria. One, it increases the height of the tower by more than ten percent or by the height of one additional antenna array with separation from the nearest existing antenna not to exceed twenty feet, whichever is greater. Two, it involves adding an apparatus to the body of the tower that would protrude from the edge of the tower more than twenty feet. Three, it entails installation of more than four new cabinets. Four, it entails any excavation or deployment of transmission equipment outside of the current site by more than thirty feet in any direction. Five, it would defeat the concealment elements of this eligible support structure. Or six, it does not comply with conditions associated with the citing approval of the existing structure. In the declaratory ruling uh issued in June of two thousand and twenty, the FCC issued additional clarification, including the height increase of up to twenty feet allowed under forty seven CFR one point six one zero zero B seven one should be measured from the top of an existing antenna to the bottom of a proposed new antenna on the top of the tower. Next slide, please. And this is a slide just regarding the review of the applications, seminal requirements and the shot clock. And forty seven CFR one point six one zero zero B nine C one. It states a state or local government may require the applicant to provide documentation or information only to the extent reasonably related to determining whether the request is a substantial change. A local government may not require an applicant to submit any other documentation, including but not limited to documentation intended to illustrate the need for such wireless facilities or to justify the business decision to modify such facilities. Forty seven CFR one point six one zero zero B nine C two. It states within sixty days of the date on which an applicant submits a request seeking approval under this section, the state or local government shall approve the application unless it determines that the application is not covered by the section. So that means if it's not um if it if they determine that it's not, that it is a substantial change. Um, as you can see, AT&amp;T complies with FCC sixty four oh nine. Uh, the FCC sixty four oh nine limit again for the increase in the height of the tower is ten percent or twenty feet as measured from the top of the highest exist- existing antenna to the bottom of the proposed new antenna, whichever is greater. AT&amp;T's proposed modification is fourteen feet and it is denoted here in the uh zoomed in app uh snippet of the elevation and I highlighted that the separation is actually fourteen feet. So the tower itself is going to be extended twenty feet, but under FCC, they measure it between the existing antenna tip height to the proposed antenna tail. And that measurement is only fourteen feet, not twenty feet. Um FCC sixty four oh nine limit in regards to antennas extending horizontally from the edge of the tower is twenty feet or less. AT&amp;T's antennas extend less than twenty feet horizontally from the edge of the tower. FCC sixty four oh nine limit uh regarding additional equipment cabinets is for fewer new equipment cabinets and AT&amp;T is proposing one additional equipment cabinet. FCC sixty four oh nine limit regarding compound expansion is within thirty feet of the existing lease premises in any direction. AT&amp;T is proposing a fifteen foot expansion to the east. In addition, the modified tower meets the concealment elements of the existing tower and we are putting in additional foe monofor branches to match the existing tower. And uh the modified tower will also meet any applicable conditions of approval associated with the original tower. In regards to the shock clock, uh as mentioned above, the local jurisdictions require to approve ineligible facilities requests within sixty days of the date on which an application is submitted and received by the jurisdiction. The application was received by the city of Newburgh on January twenty fifth of two thousand and twenty three, therefore the shock box started that date. Um, add sixty days to that date and the end shock clock date um for approval is March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three. And that the end of my slide is just a thank you. So that was the end of my presentation and um I just wanted to touch on the commissioner asked about guy wires. This per- this proposed tower currently does not have, or the existing tower does not have any guy wires currently. And the proposed, if the proposed modification will not require any guy wires. Uh, and then I also wanted to mention that a structural analysis, analysis and a tower modification drawings in addition to construction drawings will be submitted with the building permit. Um, and as far as radiation as uh Mr. Rowe mentioned, uh local jurisdiction may not make a determination based off of healthy missions um for the FCC. However, AT&amp;T is required to comply with the FCC emission standards and they were required to submit reports to the FCC and um we have to go through bi-yearly inspections and they come out and they measure and they may, we have to um, we have to meet the FCC emission standard requirements. And if we don't, then they'll take AT&amp;T's license away and they won't be able to operate. So it is heavily regulated and they do have, like I said, bi- bi-yearly um inspections, if not even more frequently. AT&amp;T complies with, they have a, they have a pretty rigid, um well, all carrier wireless carriers have a rigid compliance program that they have to go through. We have to comply with all federal, state and local requirements. Uh, obtain all the correct permitting, you know, as we're doing here tonight and we will also do through the building permit. We have to comply with the FCC, FAA, shippo, NIPA tribe requirements, you know, regarding um archaeological finds, you know, that's mainly for like new towers, but there is a, there is a strict compliance component to these um to this can type of construction. And AT&amp;T is, you know, does comply with everything. And if they don't, then they will not have a license from the, from the FCC and FAA to, to in, to install their uh facility. And then as far as the, you know, Mr. Rowe also mentioned this too, but the code does not currently have any separation requirements between wireless facilities. That's always something that we check. Um, when we're mainly when we're installing a new tower, that's something that we, we look forward to see if there's a separation requirement uh for the local code between towers. In this case, the city of Newburgh does not have that separation requirement and we are you know, modifying and co-locating on an existing tower, not installing a new tower. So this, this tower has already been there. Um, it's already been permitted, so we're just, we're just modifying it and co-locating and there's plenty of room on the tower for future carriers to co-locate on as well, just depending on what uh required height thing, antenna tip height they need to reach their services. So I just wanted to kind of touch on that a little bit and that is all I have. If anybody has any questions for me?
Uh Commissioner Capri.
Good.
Hi. Is that a go for being Commissioner Capri?
Yes, please go.
Okay, I just have an aesthetic question on this. And it seems like it would look much more natural if the larger uh new extension was actually where the old one was and the old one went up higher. Is there any reason? That's just maybe silly, but it it looks kind of funny um as as they're doing it because the larger new extension is much bigger than the one below it.
I think that might just be the way that these drawings are are drawn because it's supposed to look at like, you know, a the conical tree. That's yeah, that's the intent of the, of the, I see what you're saying here in the, in the proposed elevation, looking at the elevation. Um, looks like it gets kind of skinny where the existing antennas are and then it.
Right. And then that, so. And the other, and new antennas are, look like they're, uh have a larger diameter.
They do have a larger diameter by the, by the, I don't have the, the specs for the existing antennas. I don't have that, um, I don't have that information, but it does appear just by the naked eye of looking at these drawings that the, that AT&amp;T's antennas are wider than the existing carriers antennas. Every carrier has different sized antennas.
Ah.
Um. I can add, I can make a note because we have, we still have to go through our construction drawing process. So I can make a note to our drafter to you know, see if they can add more branches on the top.
Oh, make it look.
The only thing I would say to that is that we might have to add an additional five feet of a conical top. Um, because we'll put in anywhere between like a five to a ten foot conical top above the antennas. If we go right now, we're proposing a five foot conical top because that's what the existing tower has. So we just went with what the existing has and match and we're going to match it. Uh, we can, we have in other jurisdictions like the city of Camby, we did one of these and um we did a ten foot conical top there. So we can go up and then if you have a higher conical top, then it can be more full looking at the top. So that's something that we could do if you're interested in that.
Um, thank you for, for that. It would almost have to go on down to get wider below it.
You can, I mean, you can add it. The condition can be made to add in additional foe branches.
I would. It's just kind of silly looking the way they've got it right now. But thank you.
Sure.
I wanted to comment.
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Capri. Any other questions for Ms. Griffin?
Commissioner Wright, I'm going to write something uh on the board. But that it has to do with bandwidth. Are there any? This is going to be bandwidth C and a quick way to do it is you've got the visual spectrum where you have violet, blue, green, yellow, orange and red. And these are in nanometer scale. Here's band one, band two, A, B, and C. This band will be in this uh nanometer range and it is long wavelengths. And uh those type of wavelengths have a tendency not to uh create the kind of health problems that high frequency um such as violet, blue and green. Does that help you, Commissioner Capri?
Thank you so much. Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Griffin? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Do we have any other proponents? This project?
Not seeing any, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, do we have any opponents?
I don't see anybody jumping up and down on that one either, sir.
Okay. And we'll put it back to Ms. Griffin. Do you have any final comments?
I just wanted to um ask, just kind of circling back to the additional five foot conical top that I added or that I offered up uh and maybe adding some additional branches. I just wanted to um maybe get a little bit of feedback from staff to see what, you know, if there, if there's any uh issues with that or any input.
Uh, staff is not making a request of that because that's not part of our criteria.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. At this time, we'd like to uh close the public record on this and get final recommendation from staff.
Final recommendation from staff is unchanged. We recommend that the planning commission move to adopt planning commission order two zero two three dash zero five with conditions approving conditional use permit design review CUP twenty three dash zero 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 two slash M I M D one two three dash zero 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 one for telecommunications facility equipment at five hundred East Illinois Street, Yamhill County. for telecommunications facility equipment at five hundred East Illinois Street, the Amhill County Tax Lot R three two one eight DD zero one zero zero zero.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing none. We're moving on to deliberations. What do we think about this? And do we maybe hear a motion?
There's a really good example in Shampui Park with this type of camouflageing. Um, I don't know if other commissioners have seen that. I actually just noticed it this last year. Driving back and forth camouflage tower.
They failed. No, just kidding. Uh. Yeah, this, this is a good stuff. They've, they've got trees. We had another application before, so there is on a church, so they camouflage it as a steeple. There's all kinds of different stuff with this. So do I have a motion?
Yeah, I think right. Uh, moves to approve conditional use permit and minor modification for telecommunications facility. File number CUP twenty-two dash zero 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 two, M I M D one-two-three dash zero 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 one, including exhibits and attachments.
We'll have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We'll have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Blaney Quinn?
Yes.
Ja, oh, he's not here. Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Avery Hansen?
Yes.
Very well, motion passes unanimously. Uh, CUP uh, twenty-three dash zero zero two and all the subsequent terminology that has been read several times passes.
Thank you.
Uh, we now have a legislative public hearing in front of us. However, we are approaching the ten o'clock kind of soft cap on, on meetings we've had in the past. So before we get started on this, Doug, how long do we anticipate this next hearing to take?
I would hope that it would take no more than a half an hour and then we do have the next legislative and that's something that we do need to get through as well because it's part of a much bigger project. So I would assume that we could be done by ten-thirty, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, does anybody need to take a break? Very well. We'll, we'll take a five-minute break.
Possible to table this and hear the last one.
All right, no, we're on a timeline with our grant from DLCD on, on this one. And then on the next one, we also are trying to align our funding for the groundwater treatment plant and I'll get into that. So unfortunately, as I mentioned, we've got several months where we've got a lot of stuff coming in front of you.
If anybody needs a, a break, take it now. As soon as Commissioner Griffiths gets back, we're going.
Five minutes, Mr. Chair?
Or, or thereabouts.
Okay.
Jason, I think we have everybody back.
Okay, let us resume. We, well, moving on to the legislative public hearing about a resolution for recommending city council amended comprehensive plan. Um, CPTA twenty-three dash zero zero one, DCA twenty-three dash zero zero one with attachments, please, staff.
So first, Mr. Chair, we need to, we call for abstentions, bias and objections to jurisdiction.
Okay. Do we have any of the bias or objections to jurisdiction? I don't feel biased, so let's go.
All right. So thank you, Doug Ruck's, uh, community development director. I have with me this evening Heather Austin with Three J Consulting. You saw her at the joint work session with the city council. So we're going to kind of do a tag team. Heather's going to go through a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, walk through, we did make some adjustments to the proposal based upon the joint work session. We've got one question about parking still. Um, so we want to talk about that and then I'll jump in at the end with the compliance with comp plan and statewide planning goals and so forth. So Heather?
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I want to be respectful of your time. I understand it's late and you have another item on your agenda, but I do want to honor the work that this body and your residents have put into this project and make sure that we document in this public hearing procedure, the work that's been done and what the proposal is going forward. And hopefully we give you enough information so you can make your recommendation to city council. So, uh, next slide, please, Doug, or whoever. Thank you. Um, so I'll keep the um, background information brief because I know everybody's had a chance to look at that, but just a reminder that this project was to audit and amend the multifamily housing standards, both in the comprehensive plan and the development code, which is required by Oregon's needed housing statutes that require cities to have a clear and objective review pathway for residential development. Next. So, um, just a reminder, we're adding a clear and objective pathway, but we're not changing the pathway that already exists. So currently you can come in and apply for a multifamily housing project where they are permitted or conditionally permitted. And that will still be an option to a property owner. So we are not changing what's currently permitted. We're just adding an additional pathway. There are no changes proposed in what you can do on your property. So those types of housing or residential development that are permitted today will still be permitted and nothing's being removed from what's permitted on your property. Next. Uh, so we are only talking about multifamily dwellings. So buildings designed and used for five or more dwelling units on one lot or parcel. This does not include any middle housing, which is defined here duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhouses or cottage clusters. Uh, or any single family detached housing. I know there was some discussion at the joint work session about the middle housing standards. Those are complete for the city. The city is in compliance with HB two thousand one with the state law regarding middle housing. So this is just the next step in making sure the city is compliant with the needed housing statutes to bring the multifamily housing an option, a pathway into line to be able to develop residentially. Next. Um, just a brief overview of the public outreach that was done as part of this project. In addition to the the, the CAC committee that was this planning commission or the previous planning commission up until um, December of last year. The city did reach out to developers and housing stakeholders and they heard overwhelmingly that housing costs are high. Uh, the reasons listed here were that the land supply is limited, the costs of land supplies, workforce fees and SDCs are high. Uh, parking requirements take up a lot of the developable land and leave it very limited for how many units can actually happen on the site. Um, height restrictions and other limitations to vertical development, um, such as once you get above three stories, you have to put in elevators and that becomes cost prohibitive. Um, and that it can take a really long time to get through a land use review if you have to have a public hearing, public notice and go through maybe several hearings. So the developers and stakeholders that we heard from um, can ask the city to consider reducing SDCs and project review timelines. Uh, SDCs are outside of the development codes. That's not part of the proposal this evening, but we did consider project review timelines. Um, reducing lot size requirements. We looked at that, but we um, didn't make a recommendation for reducing lot size requirements, but instead looked at how the site itself is developed. Um, which uh, we felt satisfied this need without changing the minimum lot sizes. Uh, making land easier to subdivide. Again, that's a little outside of the scope of this project because we were talking about um, design review standards more than subdivision standards, but that's a good note to keep um, for the city for the future. And then changing community needs and climate resiliency. And um, here's my opportunity to mention that at the work session, I did mention the climate friendly and equitable communities um, legislation that Doug has corrected me does not apply here in Newburgh. So um, forgive me, I work in a lot of different communities and many of them are subject to those standards, but that is one set of state standards that you are not subject to. So um, we don't need to discuss the state requirements for that, but it is listed as a housing developer um, and stakeholder priority to make sure that your community is resilient moving forward. Next. Um, then we held a, a public, a virtual open house um, and a online survey at the beginning of this year. We found that there was general support of the proposed code amendments with the exception of the reduction of the shared open space for developments within a quarter mile of a public park, which we mentioned at the joint work session. Um, and changing the review process for certain developments. So we heard um, some mixed reviews on that one. The joint planning commission and city council work session, which I think most or all of you were able to intend. We heard general support of the proposed code amendments, but we heard direction that um, we really didn't uh, want to address parking requirement changes at this time and that uh, there was support for um, limiting the changes to the review process for certain development types. Next. So now instead of three categories that you used to see, we now have two because we've removed parking um, as one of the proposed code amendment categories. So now we're just talking about the design standards that will be on that um, clear and objective pathway. Remember that discretionary path remains available as an option. And then changes to a few of the land use review types. Next. And I just keep saying this because I want to make sure it's clear that we have the discretionary review path. It stays the same. We're just going to put a new pathway in as an option for developers and that's in that new table, um, Newburgh municipal code fifteen point two-two-zero-point-zero-six-zero B. Next. Thank you. We went one, we just skipped past, there we go. Um, so private and shared open space. Um, we want to maintain the existing code provisions for open space and landscaping and maintain the existing requirements for private um, open space on a property. But I, I do recommend this reduce fifty percent of shared open spaces, which I know we've um, received some public testimony on. And the, the reason I would still ask you to consider this is just related to um, your stated need and your housing needs analysis that you, you need more of this type of housing, more multifamily housing. And that Newburgh has the highest percentage of housing cost burden in the area with renters being much more likely to be cost burdened than homeowners. Fifty-six percent of renters are cost burdened, whereas thirty-two percent of homeowners are. Um, and just as a reminder, a cost burdened household is paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Um, severely cost burdened or paying fifty percent or more. So pu, open space is, open space and parking are two, the two biggest things on a development that keep you from being able to provide housing units. So I just want to keep that balance in mind. Um, parking, open space, landscaping, and then the actual housing itself. So it's, it's really a balancing act of how you do that. And then just keep in mind the goals of providing the opportunity to build housing, reduce barriers. Um, and that is why that recommendation is included, uh, continues to be included. Next. Uh, vehicle parking, again, not talking about number of spaces. That's not being proposed um, in the current packet that came before you, but just requiring that those parking spaces not be located between the building and the street to try to bring those buildings up to the street and engage some of that interest and make sure they're lighted appropriately, um, illuminated appropriately so that they're safe and convenient and easy to access. Next. Building entrances, you should be able to find the entrances to the buildings. You should be able to tell where you enter, where you deliver packages, um, that sort of thing. So we cleaned up this language based on comments at the work session. They were um, not as clear and objective as they should be. So now we've made them completely clear and objective that you have certain options of how you emphasize those building entrances. Um, and then again, they need to face the, the right of way, the street or the central common area. Uh, building facade design, these standards stay the same as the proposal you saw at the joint work session with minimums on street facing windows and door glazing. Distinct layers of the building, limited blank walls and garage doors painted to match the color palette. Next. Um, building materials and architectural elements. Uh, this list was refined a bit during our CAC process. Um, but this limits these types of materials on the facade of the building and then on any other side that's not the, the front along the street. You can have up to thirty-five percent of that frontage in these materials. Um, and just a reminder that this is if you're using the clear and objective pathway. If you're using the discretionary pathway, you can still come before this body with one of these materials and still get approved for that. So we're not saying no, never, ever. The city were saying not part of our clear and objective kind of quick pathway. Next. Um, and then just some additional design standards. We'd like to see carports and garages not being a primary um, focus of the development as you're moving past it, uh, front porches or patios required for at least one main entry on each building. And then making sure the roof slopes are appropriate for the design. Next. So that is the clear and objective design pathway. Um, as far as land use review type, currently most multifamily developments go through a type two staff level decision that requires public notice. Um, there are a few notable example, uh, exceptions that are type three planning commission decisions. And those are listed at the bottom as requiring a conditional use permit. So the next slide shows the recommendation. Um, and basically we do um, keep a lot of those type two staff level decisions based on our joint work session. We heard that it was important that those notices go out to the neighbors and that people know what's happening in most situations where there could be an impact uh, based on a higher level of development near them. Um, but we did leave type one for the C three properties because um, one of the, another of the stated goals in your housing needs analysis is to bring more multifamily into the downtown um, and those C three zones. Um, except Hancock Street. So we added that back out or remove that from a type one because that has a specific conditional use requirement. So that will be, uh, remain a type three. Um, and then in the I zone, that also keeps a type one. And then type three, we actually added R two and RP going through the discretionary pathways. We felt that there could be an impact um, from a development in one of those lower medium density zones that is using that discretionary pathway. It would make sense for the planning commission to review that. Next. And that is it for my portion. I'll hand it over to Doug.
Thank you, Heather. So when we had the joint work session, we were talking about parking. Um, so on the slide, we have what our current minimum is and it's based upon bedrooms. And but we heard at the work session concerns, uh, because if you got to uh, smaller projects, studios, it was actually requiring more parking. And but if you did, you know, a twenty or thirty unit, then it was pretty much the same. So we debriefed after that work session and what's in your proposal is just keeping what in the current code, so not proposing parking changes, but we wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to have one more discussion about that before we got back to the city council. Because what we had originally um, been developing through the CAC and then briefings to the planning commission, but then when we got to the joint work session, was just going with a straight one point five spaces per unit. Um, and so Heather provided this at the joint work session, just running through some of the scenarios. So a twenty-four unit with a mix of twelve look, twelve three-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units and six one-bedroom units. The current uh, is thirty-nine under the, what was proposed at that time was thirty-six. Um, parking in the scenario two for a thirty-two unit with sixteen two-bedrooms and sixteen one-bedrooms. Current code required forty under the proposed. If we went to one point five was forty-eight. And again, as there's the seven visitor spaces that are in our current code. That third scenario was a twenty-unit project, ten three-bedrooms, five two-bedrooms, um, five one-bedrooms. Current code was thirty-three proposed and the situation was thirty. And then the visitor spaces on top of that. So just as a refresher from where we were at with the joint work session. Um, this is my opportunity to say that we also have evaluated and it's in your packet. Need to enter the entire staff report into the packet. Forgot to do that at the very beginning. I did. Um. Is that we've done the analysis against the comprehensive plan and concluded that the proposal complies with the Newburgh comprehensive plan. We've evaluated it against the statewide planning goals and concluded that we're in compliance with that. We also evaluated against ORS one ninety-seven three oh three and one ninety-seven three oh seven. Uh, and it subsection specifically subsection four. So these are the needed housing statute provisions. And so I provided findings and analysis and with a conclusion that the proposal would bring us in And so I provided findings and analysis and with the conclusion that the proposal would bring us into compliance. It's also you have a supplemental packet. So Mr. Talt provided two pieces of information as a supplemental. One was distributed out. Well, you have both of them now. And then we also received just at the end of the day today, which I put at the table. Communication from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And they were saying that they, you know, support Newburgh's efforts in doing this, but they would like Newburgh to adopt its housing needs analysis. And we're trying to do that. So it's not that we have not tried. We are trying to do that. So your options this evening, a little bit different than some of the other presentations that you've seen is that you could approve the proposal as it's, as it's shown. You could make amendments to it based upon testimony that you received this evening and communications we've received that are in the supplemental material. Or you could deny the proposed amendments. At least that would be your recommendation. It still has to go to the city council. The city council has the authority to make the final decision on amending the comprehensive plan and the development code. So in your packet. You do have the changes that are all identified and laid out. So Exhibit A is the comp plan. Exhibit B is all the changes to the development code and Exhibit C is all of the findings. That will end staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Jason, this Molly Olson. Quick question, just to clarify, because we're trying to go through this fast. The private open space or the, the open space and the decision is to continue to recommend to reduce that if it's within a quarter mile of a park? Or was that taken out?
No, that has been left in as a recommendation. We didn't hear a clear direction at the joint work session to remove that. So we left it in and based on the housing needs analysis and the balancing act between providing housing, we left it in.
When, if you, if there's any way like you did with the parking to illustrate the impact of that? Because there was quite a negative reaction in council to that. But, but I think they're missing the half of the picture that you're talking about, which is this means one less unit. Or if there's any way of giving examples, that would be most useful. Thanks.
I, I think we could definitely do that for the council hearing, Doug. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Commissioner Quinn, just to clarify, the parking was actually gonna not go down. It was remaining at the current code, right?
That is the recommendation this evening, but it is open for your discussion. Thank you.
Just clarifying that the parking is remaining where it's at, not going with the adjusted smaller accommodations as per the planning mission.
Okay. Any other questions?
Oh yeah, Commissioner Newton Curtis, I should have asked this the last time around and I didn't, so I apologize. Can you explain how you came up with the fifty percent reduction? I mean, why fifty percent and not, I don't know, twenty-five percent or thirty-three?
That's a great question. It is the exact number that we used in Salem when we wrote the multifamily housing code and vetted it through that process as well. And it is existing now in the Salem code. So it, it's sort of becoming the industry standard for reducing in, and same with the quarter mile, you know, why not a half mile or an eighth of a mile? We're, we're making our estimates based on likelihood of people being able to get that distance. That's a very common like transit distance, the quarter mile. And then for the fifty percent wanting to find some balance between having some open space available on the site. But also making a meaningful difference in being able to provide housing on the site.
Yeah. Has there been much research done around that?
I don't know. But I, I will say that we when we put the, it was pre-COVID, it was twenty nineteen when we did the Salem code standards. And I, I do recall that we did spend some time working with different balancing acts with that. Yes.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Capri. Could I ask one question?
Please.
Okay. If of all of your presentation, the one thing that I personally feel very strong about is not reducing the public spaces. Is that something that I would just say no to? As far as far as my vote, would that be something somehow that I would say I, I'm opposed to reducing the shared open space?
Well, when you get to the, to the point in time about having a motion. We will, I've been writing notes diversely. I will capture individual commissioners' positions on particular sub elements and I'll make sure that that ends up in the staff report that goes to council. So you're gonna, you'll have a point. You either are going to say yes or no, but I will have captured your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If I may add to that, I, I believe you could make the recommendation to forward the proposed changes without that quarter acre as well.
That, that's an option. So as we said, you know, you can make amendments. And so this commission could discuss that this evening. And if you chose to remove the provision on the reduction, if you're within a quarter mile of a park, you can so do so. And then we would modify the proposal that would go to council to reflect that.
Okay. Well, I would like to put that out there that I would like to see that. And just see what the other commissioners think about that.
You, you, you're talking to remove that? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So what do we think? Do we want to do that?
Are we in deliberation?
Yes.
No, we are not yet. So we just finished the staff presentation. We have the proponents and opponents to go through first, Mr. Vice Chair.
On a light, okay, very well. Okay, we'll, we'll move on to that portion. And so we, we can revisit this when we get to the next phase. And so we will open the public record and open the floor to any proponents or opponents that may be here. Do we have anyone?
We have Mr. Talt.
We have Mr. Talt. Very well.
Jim, you get to make that choice.
To be honest. To be honest, I'm totally in support of clear and objective standards. No argument from me on that. I really do support those. So I sent you two letters and what I thought I'd do is I would read the second letter dated March eighth into the record with a few adjustments just for this evening. We'll call it revision A to letter two. I, and so I am just gonna read it, but I'm gonna interject a few additions. I apologize for my late arriving comments on this subject resolution, and I hope you still have time to give them full consideration. Listed below are my suggestions. Please don't mistake the bullet of format as curt or impolite. I just wanted to be brief and respectful of your time. First, please designate the institutional land used as type two review for both the clear and objective and the discretionary pass. And here is an addition to my letter that you have in front of you. Unless the project abuts lower density residential land or is greater than forty-eight units, in which case designated a type three review. Newburgh has more than three hundred acres of institutional properties, which are adjacent to or surrounded by lower density residential properties. It would be insensitive and disrespectful to the surrounding community to allow a large multifamily development without type two process that has always been Newburgh's approach. Please add a private space requirement such as balconies for upper floor units to the clear and objective path. And wording that encourages or requires it in the discretionary path. As discussed in my March sixth letter, open spaces are important to livability. Also emitting this design feature could create a less desirable and sub tier residence when compared to other most other existing multifamily units in Newburgh. And by the way, when I was looking at all the slides that have been put up there in these presentations, I noted that almost all of them have balconies. Private spaces. And I, if you drive around Newburgh, that's what you see. I think it's important. I hope you consider including those. Please delete the proposed reduction in shared open space for multifamily residents who live in one quarter mile of a park. I discussed this in detail in the March sixth letter. I'm gonna read that portion again. That residents with mobility issues may have difficulty getting to a park a quarter mile from their residence. For example, elderly residents with hip or knee issues, veterans with prosthetics, young parents with toddlers. The proposed reduction of onsite open space ignores their needs and fails what I call the equitable access test. However, I was thinking about, I thought, well, it's, it's possible that you might choose to give further thought to a reduction for developments that are very small, where there just isn't a lot of land available. And the other thing is I, it was just my observation when I read through the presentation that it would be helpful to add the methodology for calculating parking spaces, whatever you decide on to the clear and discretionary path in table fifteen dot two twenty dot oh six oh. You could do it directly, or you could do it by a reference to the the Newburgh Municipal Code. I want to point out, nothing in my request would make us noncompliant with the clear objective standards that the state is looking for. Because in my opinion, the primary advantage of clear and objective standards is just that they're clear, they're concise, they're direct, and they save time. So I think, I think that covers it. Thank you.
Yes, is there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I appreciate everything you said. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Capri. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for your testimony.
All right. Does that mean I get to go home and finally eat a piece of the pumpkin pie that I've made today?
Unless you want to hang out.
I thought I'd be. Yes, I do. Thank you.
And we have anyone else, Doug?
We do not have anyone, anyone else, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. So we have opponent, I'm sorry, we had a proponent. I guess, opponent. And that's it. And so at this time, we'll close the public record and move on to a final recommendation from staff.
Staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash three eight six.
Very well. Do we have any questions for staff?
Planning Commissioner Wright.
Go ahead.
Having onsite usable outdoor recreation space in all residential developments coincides with amendments to section seven Newburgh Municipal Code. Section fifteen point twenty-two dash zero six zero, the section's purpose includes a provision to provide a healthy and attractive environment for those who live there. Not in all of Newburgh. And I truly believe that outdoor usable outdoor recreation space is important to mitigate stress, anxieties, support mental health and physical challenges that occur with many populations. I feel this leaves our community's residents and current and workforce at a disadvantage in the future, if not removed from this document. I make a motion to strike I from Exhibit B, page twenty-two of seventy-four, table fifteen.
Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Wright, just before we do that, we're still questioning for staff and our deliberations. So just, just one second. If nobody, nobody else has any questions, we'll move right back to that.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, just so we follow in procedure there. So
Actually, I got one more question.
Okay.
Six of seventy-four, the building materials, why are the materials listed as prohibited? It was just a question that one of the city councillors had.
That the materials that are listed as prohibited are in the clear and objective pathway, but you still could use those materials through the discretionary pathway. This came out of a sample clear and objective code from another jurisdiction that your former housing planner brought forward. I believe the City of Milwaukee uses these materials. And they have been found to be less desirable for residential type developments. I know corrugated metal is becoming very popular on you know breweries and, and types of commercial developments. But as far as residential, we still felt it was appropriate to leave it as a discretionary pathway option. And the other materials are not you know, don't tend to be the residential material types that you'd like to see on your facades. But if someone had a great idea that was innovative and wanted to use these materials, they still could. They would just come to planning commission to do that.
Thank you. Page thirty-one, seventy-four.
Okay. So everybody's paying attention to this about what you're, you're proposing to strike, strike from the
No, I've actually got another question. Why are cottage cluster projects exempt from the standards?
Because they are part of the missing middle housing. Out of the House Bill two thousand and one, we already developed clear and objective standards for those unit types.
I just want to make sure I asked about that. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Anyone have any, any thoughts? Let's get everything into it that we, that we think we want to change or think we're good or or what? Because after this, go on to city council.
Well, so this is Commissioner Capri again. Am I clear on that we're going forward with Chris's motion to strike the reduction, the fifty percent reduction of private spaces?
Oh, we're still talking about it.
Okay, well, because I, I think that's a perfectly acceptable plan. I would, I would like to see that struck.
Okay.
What the other commissioners feel about the open space reduction?
This is Commissioner Newton Curtis. I agree that it should be struck from the proposed.
We have three people in favor of this. Do we have anybody against it?
Just a, just a quick comment from councillor Olson, because I, I personally agree with you. Especially after COVID, having a good outdoor space was, was critical. I think to make the decision, you should understand what you're trading off because multifamily is our best bet at lower income housing. So when we make decisions about parking and space, we are making decisions about how many units we can get on a piece of property. And that, of course, translates directly to how much they will cost. I think you were trying to make that point earlier. So I don't disagree. I'm not a voting member in this assembly. I think you'll find great support for striking it in city council. But I do think when that conversation comes up, we should be very transparent about we're making a quality of life decision here and it does impact cost. That's, that's my only comment. And we can't do that tonight. It was a request maybe for next time.
Well, and just as a reminder, we're, this is a recommendation to city council, so councillor Olson, you're I, I don't know what, I don't know if you're getting us into a Mobius strip here or something, but yeah.
Not at all. Please, please proceed. I'm just saying.
No, 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 I was just remarking on the, the order, order of operations here, that's all. Okay, so do we think that this particular compromise is worth it based upon that very astute observation from, from councillor Olson?
Absolutely. I don't think it's going to affect it. I think it's going to, if anything, it's going to create a livability that people want to live here. Who cares about one extra crushed in apartment?
Sure, but just, just as a thought exercise, it may be useful to put, to attempt to put yourself in, into the mindset of somebody new to the, to the housing market and and unable to afford something because there are not particularly this one per se, but too many of these sorts of livability compromises made, and this is a cumulative effect on the cost. So do we, are we certain that, you know, we're not going too far in one direction?
No.
Commissioner Quinn here, I think I really appreciate where also councillor Olson is coming from, because you consider biases and looking at how we wanna try and have we ourselves might interact with the space, but also consider our own biases and how we might we might interact with them, but considering beyond ourselves and how it's important for the community at large. When I think about a quarter of a mile, I don't think about it being that big of a deal. I often travel with my own child for that far of a distance, and it doesn't seem that far, but on a larger scale for the sense of community, it does make it is a strong consideration that I do agree with, that it makes sense that a quarter mile can be very difficult for some people, and just because I might shrug it off, doesn't mean that it's gonna be remotely feasible for the greater public. And also councillor Olson's point is really good, that we have to consider, there is as, as much as we do want to think about the greater good and livability and pleasantness that we want to bring about our town, there is also the reality that we have to take into consideration of costs and making it feasible as much as we can for, for all. That being said, it, it seems easier to build additionally if we remove park space, then it might be to build additionally and then like, oh, we don't want that, and then remove housing to subsequently build a park. It seems like it might be more appropriate to consider it from this angle first. See where the city council wants to take it from there, but I think it is worthy of consideration and going the direction Commissioner Wright has suggested.
Okay. I'm not hearing a lot of dissent as far as going along with that. So Doug, do we need to? So let's see, when we do a, a motion to pass the entire resolution, we can add this as amendment during that vote, or do we need to take a separate vote?
Uh, you could, either way, I might suggest you get to a point where someone has a motion. And if the motion is to approve the resolution with the following amendments, and then we can list those out.
Okay. When we get to that point, I, I, that will be what we shall do, I think. Okay, do we have any other suggestions for additions, subtractions, something? Are you guys, you guys have something to share?
You say hearing none.
No, I saw them conferring, and I, I didn't hear anything, but
Go ahead, Jason.
Okay, so hearing none, let's, let's look for a motion.
Commissioner Wright, motion to approve planning commission resolution twenty twenty-three dash three eight six. Recommending city council amend the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and Newburgh Municipal Code Title Fifteen Development Code and all the numbers of codes have been repeatedly said this evening with a motion to strike.
Would was with, with the, with the The striker, the striker of I, we're not, we're not moving to strike, we're moving, the whole thing is one thing, or one motion.
Yeah, a motion to remove I from exhibit B, page twenty-two of seventy-four. Table fifteen point twenty-two zero point zero six zero B Objective Process under number one, B I I dash I.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I, I will second that.
Have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton, Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Avery Hansen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes with subsequent modification or, or amendment. So.
The next one I should be able to get done in my part in four minutes or less.
Sounds pretty good. So moving on to resolution recommending city council amend the two thousand and seventeen water master plan incorporating the addendum water supply planning to twenty twenty-three into the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan, CPTA twenty-two dash zero zero one WMP GWT. And at this point, we'd like to call for objections to jurisdiction bias or, and expertise contact. And I'm forgetting one thing, aren't I, Doug?
And this one, sir, it is abstentions.
Stensions.
And objections to jurisdiction.
I've had that one. I just forgot, forgot abstentions. Do we have any of those things? Hearing none, we will move on and go to the staff report from Master Doug.
All right, so begin by entering the entire staff report into the record. So this is an amendment to create an addendum to the Water Master Plan for the Water Supply Planning for twenty twenty-three. So this proposal adds an addendum, as I just mentioned, Water Supply Planning twenty twenty-three into the Comprehensive Plan for the Water Master Plan as Appendix F. So the original Water Master Plan was adopted in twenty seventeen. We did an amendment related to the riverfront master plan. The addendum updates two sections in the Water Master Plan, four point O, the Water Supply Analysis, and section seven, the Recommendations and Capital Improvement Program. So it focuses on two activities. One is the redundant water supply system. So creating a system to draw water from the Willamette River on the north side will provide the city with a safe and reliable water future, and the second is groundwater treatment plant. And this is to build a new, modern, seismically resilient groundwater treatment plant that will cost similar to the required upgrades of our existing groundwater treatment plant, which is very old, end of life. Gotta put covers over portions of it, and so they've done cost analysis for that. So the findings for this one. We've analyzed it against the statewide planning goals and found it to be in compliance. We evaluated against the Comprehensive Plan and concluded it was in compliance. We evaluated against administrative rules. Chapter six sixty, division eleven for public facilities. Since this was just adding an addendum to address those issues of this proposal, we didn't have to go through the full analysis of this OAR, but I went through most of it that was applicable. And then the final one here is the, we evaluated against the municipal code, and this is a type four procedure, so it's legislative. And we can comply with those requirements. So this is the section that we changed. So in our comprehensive plan, we would add, as underlined in the words, and addendum, Water Supply Planning twenty twenty-three. When you go through the Water Master Plan in those sections, I did have to add footnotes, because we did footnotes for the riverfront. So that it takes you to get to Appendix F, where there's the new CIP numbers and relating to the groundwater treatment plant. So staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three, three eighty-four. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this highly controversial measure?
This document was wacky. There are multiple appendices A's that are cited in different areas, but that are the same stuff, but
Well, I, I don't think any of this stuff is ever claimed to make a whole lot of sense, so. Moving on, do we, do we, we gotta go through the whole opening the public record for this, Doug?
You, you do, and then I, you do that, then I will take it from there.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public record for any opponents or, or proponents that wish to testify.
And there is no public in the room, and there's no public on Zoom.
Very well, this time we will.
Close the public testimony portion.
Close public testimony and move on to final recommendations from staff.
So staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three eight four.
Different number than I saw, okay?
That we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash three eighty-four.
Very well, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Chris Wright? Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Avery Hansen?
Yes.
Very well, motion passes. Moving on to items from staff.
I haven't got to that far back in my notebook. Uh, you have your forward calendar. So we've got through many things tonight. We still got housing, we still got a quick update on the vacation rentals. Remember, next meeting, April thirteenth, you've got a quasi judicial hearing on a vacation rental, the Springbrook Master Plan Amendments, and then the substantial completion requirements, which is another state law piece, and then another update on the vacation rentals. So April's gonna be another busy meeting.
Okay.
There, Mr. Vice Chair, it would be Clay giving you a brief update on, on the vacation rentals, research.
I'm gonna make it, because it's relatively late. But I also want to tell you that our plan, workloads permitting, I'm hoping to bring that research to you next month, which means it's not done today. We've had some good progress, so we're basically vetting the public comments that have come through. We're going through twenty sixteen through to to today, and so we're basically up through about twenty twenty-one, plus, thank you, Fay. We've had some additional research associated with statistics from the US Census Bureau and some others related to housing affordability and availability. And then we're also gonna have some, we've also been looking at some statistics associated with our own transient logian tax. And our permit data and our business license data, which will be a comparative that's gonna be in there. So that's what I've got for you for today. So most of what we have left is policy examples and approaches from other jurisdictions in Oregon. We'll finish that over the next month, and that's what we've got.
I really thank you for doing that.
Just think, thank you for the update and for your diligent work. Okay, if there's nothing more from staff, is that correct, Doug?
Nothing more from staff, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any items from commissioners?
Oh, your class. Oh, I forgot about your class, your training session. Yeah, so you all. Everybody got your confirmations, five to seven, you can do it Zoom. Comfort of your own home. It's on a Wednesday evening on the twenty-second.
Okay.
Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you, Fay. Any other items for commissioners or any things of note? Commissioner Wright.
There's House Bill being, it's the first writing, but it's three, House Bill three two six eight, and they're actually looking at establishing a rural system for development charges. And the population equal to or less than forty thousand. So this would be something that the city, if this goes forward, it would establish system development charge program within Housing and Community Services to pay system development charges for rural affordable multifamily housing. So I just wanted to give people heads up on that.
Estate SDC for, for with like a, like a shared, shared pool of money that, that the state shares, or I don't understand.
Yeah, that's why you might wanna look it up, House Bill three two six eight, regular session. But, yeah, in your spare time. And I did listen in on the planning commission, or the city council meeting, and they have asked for a terminology to kill the CET program. Construction excise tax, and if you have any testimony for that, I suggest that you show up at their next city council meeting. And if you have anything to offer them, I would do so. Thank you.
So just to clarify that real quick. The conversation is first to get our housing production strategy in place so that if our strategy requires the CET, we don't repeal the CET. That's a big discussion for the next working session, and you are all welcome. And if you have good comments about why it's needed, that would be very good to have.
Okay, thank, thank you, councillor Olson. Okay, if we have nothing else in front of us, speak now. This meeting of the Newburgh City Planning Commission of March ninth is adjourned. Thank you all for your patience on a, on a long night that hasn't been long like this in a long time, so.
Well done.
Thank you, Jason.